All right, we will get started for the, with the October meeting of the Georgetown and Scott County Planning Commission. I would like to introduce Holden Fleming. He is our new director of construction services, planning commission, here in Georgetown, Scott County. And Holden has been on the job for a week. You all be easy on him. Take out your frustrations off. All right, now I will take, need approval for the September invoices. Say a motion, second by Mr. Green. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition likewise? All right, approval of the September 12th minutes.
I make a motion, we approve.
Phone favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, approval of the October agenda. There are no changes since Monday.
One item of note, just make sure, make sure your mics are on.
Say again.
Your mics. The mic light, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Second.
Second.
By Ms. Singer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And so we have no items for postponement, other than what's on the agenda.
Correct.
Okay.
Which is also listed on the TVs.
Right, right. And would you inform all of us, items that are eligible for consent agenda?
Yes, there are four items on the consent agenda. This Pop property, the Carrera property, the Morero property, and the Georgetown Commons subdivision plan.
Okay, so that's A, C, D.
And I.
On the other side of the agenda, if you flip it over, item I.
Got you, okay. All right. So to, to let all of you all know, the items that are eligible for consent are items that the developer or owner are not looking for any waivers, and so we can not have to hear everything. We heard it Monday at our planning session, and so we'll go down through those individually. But if there's someone that wants to hear the information about any of these development, or is opposed to it, we will hear it. And so the, the first one is the FSP 2024-38, Stephen and Aaron Pop, Stephen and Aaron Pop subdivision, final subdivision plan to divide tracks one and three from the parent track number one, which is 45.21 acres. One A is 11.43 acres. One B is five acres. One C is 22.42 acres. One D is 6.36 acres. Track three, the, of the parent, is 32.92 acres. Three A is 5.01 acres. Three B is five acres. And three C is 22.91 acres, and this is located at 1756, 1758 Switzer Road. Is there anyone here that wants to hear this information, or is opposed to that subdivision, that division? Okay. So it is consent eligible, eligible. I, I need a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All right, Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Oh, I need to, before we go any further, I need to note for the minutes that Ms. Canfield and Mr. Jesse are not here tonight. So Ms. Singer voted yes.
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. With the Pops or their representative, please come up here and see Mr. Perkins.
We need to swear in too.
Pardon?
We need to swear in.
Thank you much. Everyone, Mr. Perkins, can you swear everyone in, please?
My hand's getting cranked signing all these things, I probably ought to. Everyone who's signed in, please stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to statements you've made tonight to the trims and best your information later?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Dan. I've, I've had it written right here, and then looked right over it. The next consent eligible property is FSP 2024-40. It's a final subdivision plan to divide one five acre parcel from a 20.05 acre parcel, leaving 15.5 acre remaining, located at 3350 Cincinnati Pike. Is there anyone that is opposed to this subdivision, this division of property, or would like to hear it for some reason? Seeing none, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve FSP 2024-40.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask where the house is going to be built?
Can you come up here to?
Yes, the property, I think that's up to where I live at.
Okay.
And I guess I was just a little bit curious about it.
I'll briefly go through it now. I will tell you that just because it's being divided off doesn't necessarily know, or doesn't necessarily mean there'll be a house there. I'm sorry, my clicker is not clicking. There was a pop on, people want to know. It's look all that color up on there. So this is what I'll call the holler, you know, that comes off the point. I would assume maybe yourself or some of these others live up in these corner sack areas.
106 Blackberry.
Understood. Now, you were notified because this property is pretty large, and it joins those.
Yes.
Now, the division itself, I'm sorry, Ms. and everybody else. That was the history, man, it all history and everything. There we go. So down there on the roadside on the south, you know, there's a couple horse barns and things there.
Mm-hmm.
To the south of there, these folks are just splitting off five acres.
Okay.
Whether there's going to be a house there or not, couldn't tell you. We just simply only allow divisions of a minimum of five acres out in that area. So that's why they're doing five.
Okay.
But I couldn't speak to their intentions.
So they're just splitting that five acres off?
Yes, ma'am.
So who's going to own what stuff does?
Still the same owner, as far as I understand, so.
Sorry, I'm trying to get your staff in, in that Blackberry. Okay, that was my question.
Okay, yeah, we don't, we don't really get into what their intentions are in this instance, or who is or isn't owning.
So they're just selling that one square right there?
Whether they're, whether they're selling it or not, I, I couldn't say, Ms., they just want to split it up. They may sell it, they may give it to a family member, they may do nothing with it.
Okay. That, yeah, that answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're most welcome.
Yeah, that was, that was my question.
All right, I had a motion by Mr. Smith. A second. A second by Mr. Garrett. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right, would owners or representatives see Mr. Perkins up here for that one? All right, the next item for consent is FSP 2024-41. It is a final subdivision plan to divide the following tracks from a 40.67 acre parent track, leaving 19.24 acres. Track one is 5.0 acres. Track two is 5.0 acres. Track three is five acres. Track four is 6.41 acres, and they are all located at 3482 Ironworks Pike. Is there anyone that is opposed to this development, or would like to hear it? All right, seeing none, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval of FSP 2024-41.
All right, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Ms. Singer?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay. Owners or representatives, please come see Mr. Perkins. All right, now, the other one that is consent eligible is part of the Georgetown Commons development, so although that may be consent eligible, we'll wait and hear it with the rest of it. Is that proper weight?
This is discretion. If you'd like to have it be part of the consent agenda, we can do it now, or we can wait until it's all discussed at once in the long term.
So it, although the rest of the Georgetown Common development, we've got to, we've got to have a zone change first, don't we?
Yes.
Yeah, so that we'll just put it.
Okay, so we'll have to incorporate that together there. All right, so that takes us back up to old business. Is that all the, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let's continue on with, get these other two or three small ones out of the way, before we get to the two big commercial discussions. The next item would be a zone change, so we have to open a public meeting for ZMA 2024-42. Kevin Bradley, zone change, zone change request for .33 acres from B1 neighborhood commercial to B3 central business.
Did you say public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
You said public meeting.
Oh, public hearing, sorry.
Public hearing?
Yeah.
Did I say public meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, a public hearing, not a public meeting. This is a public meeting. Located at 3285 Main Street, Stampin' Ground, Kentucky.
Okay, thank you, Chair Mifflin. So this again is 3285 Main Street, Stampin' Ground is the subject parcel. It is a request for a zoning map amendment, also called a zone change. The property is currently zone B1, which is our neighborhood commercial district. The applicant is seeking a change to B3, Central Business District. It's just a third of an acre down there, essentially the corner of Main Street, and I believe it's Springview Drive. The future land use designation per the comp plan is commercial. Here is an aerial view of the project site, again, just at the corner of Main Street and Springview Downtown Stampin' Ground. Little closer. So the existing building was previously a bank. It has been vacant for some time, how long I don't know, but the, the applicant is seeking, I believe, to purchase this property and potentially, you know, achieve their zoning map amendment request. When we look at zone changes and map amendments, we have to go by KRS 10213. Essentially, it leans heavily on the comprehensive plan, future land use. We also look at is the current zoning inappropriate, and would the zoning that the applicant is seeking be more appropriate? Or also, have there been major changes of an economic, physical, or social status within the community or nearby the parcel? Again, we lean heavily on the advisement of the comprehensive plan and the process and studies we went through, as to whether or not that research and those findings support the zone change the applicant is seeking. This is our future land use map that was adopted per the last comprehensive plan finished this summer. Again, that star right there represents our subject parcel. The light red color you see at central then is future land use designation of commercial. And then we have various gradients of neighborhood services and things throughout there, the blue being quasi-public, the large square is Stampin' Ground Elementary. We also have some other areas for mixed use there in the purple towards the north. All the shades of yellow are essentially low-density residential as well. Pretty typical of what you'd see in a downtown corridor, any small town USA. Again, when we look at zone map amendment requests, we look heavily towards the state statute, as well as our own comprehensive plan. Section one, it provides guidance for the consideration of requests. The comprehensive plan shows this property, again, and those to the north and west, as proposed commercial use, or continued commercial use, with quasi-public, mixed-use and low-density residential mixed in in the expanded areas of that Main Street and Springview corridor. Therefore, staff has concluded that the proposed change is consistent with the comprehensive plan, future land use map for the area, and further, this zone change request actually is also supported by various chapters and goals and objectives of said comprehensive plan, specifically the community forum chapter, economic growth, and heritage. Just some excerpts from those chapters, of which the goals and objectives do speak to this zone map change, and few others. The community forum, essentially, it seeks to maintain and enhance our built environments' form and character. It allows for flexibility in land use. Also, we want to protect the integrity and quality of existing structures and areas. We want to focus revitalization areas, or efforts, rather, in existing downtown and cultural areas. Also, just investing in general in our downtowns of our municipalities, whether it be Georgetown, Sadieville, or Stampin' Ground. Again, this is a vacant property, so, you know, somebody's looking to go in there and make the most of it, to they see fit. Also, our, our community forum chapter requires and requests that infill projects be taken up before we look at new development or sprawl. This instance, using a vacant existing building is an example of infill. It could be a potential reuse or repurpose of either an existing somewhat developed parcel, or an existing building. Economic growth, essentially, you know, we seek to diversify the Scott County economy, and support the economic strategic plan as it's been evaluated and adopted. We want to encourage more local business and job opportunities, independent of, you know, maybe outside chains, things of that nature. Encourage entrepreneurship, small-scale commercial and temporary businesses, again, entrepreneurship, people make in their own way. Heritage as well, we want to preserve and encourage those to develop and spend money, and, you know, provide stimulus to the economy in our downtown centers, you know, and the county at large as well. So our B3 Central Business District zoning, the way I like to put it, and anytime anybody's called me to ask questions about it, you know, I tell people, you can walk outside of this very courthouse, stand on the corner and, and look around in the circle. Essentially, everything you see in downtown Georgetown with certain limits is our B3 General Commercial District, Central Business District, excuse me. It allows essentially, it encourages for drive-up, park-and-walk, where you could do various services, whether they be specialized businesses such as barbers, professional offices, things of that nature, small department stores. At one time, downtown Georgetown had a few department stores, or men and female clothers. We've got a few boutiques and other professional and personal services here. This zoning encourages those types of uses. Essentially, what separates it from the current B1 zoning is that it does allow for some residential use. B1 uses are very, very similar to the scale and, and types of businesses you would see in B3. However, we generally find B1 to be our most limiting business zone, as again, it does not allow for any residential components, nor does it encourage any high-intensity use that's automotive-driven. The language in our, in our code states that B3 specifically would like to discourage high-intensity motor-driven use, so you could not expect to see a gas station, or a drive-thru restaurant, anything of that sort here. Now, however, admittedly, banks do have drive-throughs, things of that nature, but they are not, they don't encompass essentially the entirety of the use or business model. Again, if you go out here at the corner and you look around, you'll see three banks in downtown Georgetown, all of which do serve the motoring public to some degree, but it's not the entirety or the base of their business model. So again, B3 allows a lot of the same uses that B1 does, or, or all of them. It expands to a point to, again, allow residential, and a little more kind of park-and-walk versatility. As far as the residential use goes, though, I will kind of circle back to that, I won't beat you on it forever. It does allow up to essentially a medium density of use. Again, a lot of the buildings in downtown Georgetown and elsewhere have apartments or such above. The, the density would be capped at six units per building, per, per the zoning standards. So we're not looking at a high-rise, or a 16-unit, or anything of that nature. Staff concludes overall that the proposed zoning is appropriate for the, for the use and the suitability of the area. Again, we've spoken about the comprehensive plan justification, the zone standards, and the context, and the location. Staff ultimately concludes that this would provide for diverse and continued development of the downtown area, while also, you know, keeping the ideas of pedestrian and public safety in mind, promoting an orderly development of services and businesses. You would not see a strip mall, or anything of that nature in this zone. And again, you know, of course, when we're talking zone changes, we're not just talking about the immediate applicant's proposed use, we're talking five, 10, 15, 50 years down the road, as opposed, you know, if somebody, I want everybody to be successful, I do. So I hope this applicant and their proposed use goes well. But, you know, at the same time, the reality of it is, is the applicant could receive the change as requested, you know, turn around the next day and sell it. So we do have to look past the current application and see the future, as much as we can. And on that note, say if this building were removed after the zoning was, you know, gotten as requested, any further development would be subject to a development plan that we would first look at in-house, and it would come before you all, and that would have all the regular stopgaps of development standards, landscape standards, things of that nature. And that will also apply, say, if this applicant keeps the building, but wants to reorganize the parking, the lot itself, et cetera. The zones, and as they abut, other zones do have landscape standards, screening standards, sidewalks, things of that nature. At this point, we are not in a development plan stage, nor have we seen any conceptual plan. So right now, we are just in the zone change. So again, we're supported by KRS here, as well as the comprehensive plan, both parts A and B, and section one. So overall, staff is concluding and recommending approval of the zone change request from B1 to B3. And with zone changes, since they're not in a development plan stage, or anything of that nature, they're just beholden to essentially our stipulations of the zoning ordinance and subdivision regs, until such time as they need a development plan for a different use. So I believe the applicant and their representation is here, if you have any questions for them, or myself.
What specifically does B3?
Exclude in terms, you talked about what B1 would exclude, but B3 allows for residential, but what else does it exclude?
It allows residential to a certain limit. Essentially, what I'll refer to is medium density, specifically, it caps, the best way I can encapsulate it is, you know, at most six units per building, because you generally see it in one building on a street frontage, things of that nature, or, you know, bound in by other buildings. So the best way to summarize it is, at most, six units per building. But it specifically discourages anything that would be dependent on motoring, high-intensity traffic.
Okay.
Again, the best descriptions I could give you of that are drive-thru restaurants, gas stations.
Right.
Strip malls.
Where people would be coming and going consistently.
Right, no, B3 explicitly seeks to promote park-and-walk, similar to the way B1 does. One of the bigger defining differences is, again, B3 does allow for residential uses to a certain point.
So if the owner were to get this zone change, and not change the building at all, just unlock the front doors, and maybe change the interior, would there have to be a development plan at that point?
Not if there's any, not, nothing that's essentially altering the traffic flow for the use of the area surrounding it. Now, if they're to change the interior, that's going to be a building inspection thing.
Right.
You know, they would be expected to pull all the necessary building permits, electrical permits, plumbing permits, potentially get, you know, the fire department involved to evaluate whether or not the structure is up to current fire code, things of that nature. But as far as our department, we would be hands-off unless they needed the development plan.
Thank you.
But if B3 doesn't allow banks back in that building?
It would, yes, sir, it would.
It would allow banks back in that area.
Yes, yes, it would. Again, B3 allows essentially for all the B1 uses, adds in a residential component. And again, I'll, I'll, I'll say it again, you know, you stand on the corner here in courthouse, and there's maybe three banks, maybe a few more.
So you're saying they couldn't put like a chicken restaurant there?
If it doesn't have a drive-through.
If it doesn't have a drive.
If it doesn't have a dri, I think Fava's has chicken.
They might need a chicken restaurant.
You know?
Yeah. That's what we need in Scott County, is a little chicken restaurant.
Galvins has chicken, you know?
Yeah.
So, but yes, to your point, it, it could be a, you know, it, it could be a drive-up, park-and-go-in, family-style restaurant, you know, a community central business district feature.
Just so there wasn't significant in-and-out traffic.
Right.
You mentioned strip mall would be excluded.
No strip malls, no. Anything that's meant to be, you know, quick, fast, in a hurry, what would be B2, you know, highway commercial kind of.
Higher intensity usage, okay, in and out.
Maybe people that are passing through and leaving. This district is meant to encourage people to spend time and money in a central business district.
We just want their company, we don't want their.
Yeah, well, you know, hugs and handshakes and all that, you know, so.
All right.
All right, before we get any questions from the, the audience and the community here, I'd like to hear from the developer here, and see what he has to say, and that way we can get all those questions maybe answered all at one time.
Thank you, sir.
And just for the record, need to show that Mr. Jesse has now joined the commission for the record. All right, thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Kevin Bradley. I'm the applicant here. I think Rhett teed it up pretty nicely. You know, I'm not, not going to go over all the, the economic goals and community goals that this will hit. Basically, what this is doing is just, it's taking a building that has been vacant, in a couple months, it'll be, will have been vacant for four years. It's also a building that cannot be a bank for another two and a half years. There's a deed restriction on the property, that a bank cannot go back in there for some time period. It's a property that was on the market for over a year and a half, just looking to repurpose that property. It is the residential component that I'm after. I don't mind to tell you, my intent would be to have an Airbnb there. I'm not going to change the interior of the bank, there would be no development plan necessary. You know, the vault, the teller, you know, the drive, it's all going to stay right where it is. Pretty clean, pretty simple.
So just kind of an open space, maybe with the vault, and the offices still there?
You got it, offices become bedroom, I mean, you know, pretty clean, pretty simple, but glad to answer any questions.
No change to the front, or anything like that?
I'm sorry?
No change to the front?
No, no, I mean, of course, we'll, we'll make it look a little bit prettier than it looks now.
Yeah, more like, yeah, it's like you're walking.
Yeah, it's a little, a little overgrown, and, you know, the air doesn't work, you know, roofer told me, if I don't get some roofer repair done soon, you're going to have, I mean, again, it's a building that, that needs, you know, just, I think everybody knows that, right? A, a building needs to be used, needs to be lived in, needs to be utilized, because if it isn't, it, it goes downhill pretty quick.
How long's it been vacant?
It has been vacant since January of '21.
Would you consider letting a bank go back in there when the time's up?
Wouldn't have a problem with that at all.
It seems like it would be a fairly easy conversion back, if you weren't really doing much interior change.
That's right, yeah. And depending, of course, whatever, if a bank went back in, whatever they preferred, it should be pretty simple. And I'm sure there'll be more of the questions, but I'm glad to answer any that you have.
All right, thank you much, Kevin, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Do we have any questions from the audience, for the staff, or from the owner here? Do we have any questions from the audience, for the staff, or from the owner here?
Yes, sir.
Do they have to be informed questions, or can they be thoughts from the community?
Statements or, yeah, whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can try, okay. Thank you.
It's a little bit easier.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone that is going to speak, if you would, state your name and address.
Good evening, gentlemen and Ms. Singer. My name is Dale Perry and I live at 3159 Main Street. It's on the corner of Seabury and Main in Stampin' Ground, just under maybe a quarter, maybe an eighth of a mile from the bank that we've all known since 1974. I have some, kind of a statement, some things that I've compiled if I could read to you all. First off, I need to apologize because I kind of heard this might happen with the new plan, but they kept saying "commercial, commercial, commercial." And in your all's own handbook online, "B1 neighborhood commercial, B2 highway commercial, B3 central business district." Doesn't mention "commercial," so I never assumed it would go to B3, that would be what somebody would want to bring it in. So I really didn't, at that time, I was saying, oh, B1, B2, that's fine for the community, that's good. So, apologize. To the best of my knowledge, statements I'm making today are true, because I did talk to some representatives of the planning zoning, so I'm basing some of my stuff off. But Mr. Bradley was honest with us and said that he's looking at residential, possibly Airbnb-type stuff, so. First of all, I'd just like to say, the city of Stampin' Ground, their commission and the people, because we had some meetings about six years ago, I think, where about a hundred and some people came from the community, and we met at the school and we talked about a thing called the possibility of doing a community center. This was actually published as a result of it. And in this community center booklet, it says, "The property referred to as Buffalo Square, which is right across the street, shall quote, 'to serve as the anchor for the downtown of our city.'" The zoning request has crossed the road from there and the Stampin' Ground, if you've not moved to Stampin' Ground, which a couple of you probably are, there are four of you are, yeah. It really needs businesses that serves its community and citizens. I'm just going to read from this, I hope that's okay. "It does not need one of its few properties that is restricted to being a business. It truly does not need this property changed to zoning classification as open-ended conditional uses that can be applied or requested." We've all seen in three, unlike one, one has kind of a vein of, you know, what we'll allow in there, but three is come talk to the planning zoning. So the city really wouldn't know what could possibly go in there down the road, down the future. We could hope that it would go in there, but we don't know for sure. Especially a business that would serve a sole owner and a sole occupant. It'd serve a landowner if they put up an Airbnb or short-term rental and he would get the money from the renter, but that wouldn't go back into our economy and into what Stampin' Ground needs to keep living. This building was built as a business, occupied as a business for its entirety of its use, and is one of the very few buildings that can immediately be occupied as a business in our city currently. And here's six concerns that were gathered from people sadly today, because just, I didn't get, put this on Facebook and didn't get the onslaught of calls till about 11 o'clock this morning when I was in Cincinnati, so best that I can word them. Some concerns that people voiced. Again, our community is limited business spaces. This zoning change could allow the city to lose one more business that serves the community. We've actually lost about nine businesses in the past couple of years, the bank being one of them. Many in the city would like a financial institution to come back to our city. Commissioners, the mayor, and private individuals have approached financial institutions. I know I did. Did you when we were on Rob and the other two, and the mayor even approached, so we all approached them. We all got different reasons why they wouldn't come down there, but one of the answers I got to have in the future is have a place that's ready, available for us to move in once that expires. And Ms. Bradley was on it, it's about a year and a half before they can do that again because of the way the property was put off. Some have heard the only way that it would be, a property was already built, I see, I had a question about the B3, it wouldn't allow an ATM drive-up, correct?
There's no reason why it would serve as part of a bank's business model.
Okay, we got that on record. Good. If it were to become an Airbnb, some are meticulously maintained, some are beautiful, some are more beautiful than our own properties, but with that, some aren't. Some fall into disrepair. I don't know how long Mr. Bradley's owned it, but it still needs to be trimmed, landscaped, shutters fixed. I mean, it wasn't at all in the past few years, and I guess you've had it long enough to apply for this, so.
I don't know, I don't know, do you even own it now, Mr. Bradley? Do you own it now?
No, I don't.
Oh, he does not? Okay.
I'm assuming Mrs. maybe, can, probably is, offers contingent upon.
So he's applying before owning it?
Correct.
That happens lots of times, because people have a contract contingent upon, yeah.
That was something I was not informed of.
But the owner has to be part of the application.
Yeah.
So she is aware, Ms. Grisell? Okay.
Right.
Gotcha, okay. And what would the aesthetic be for being in the middle of the businesses? Because one piece of property, it's surrounded by businesses. Has a grocery store, has a place that used to be a hardware store, a laundromat, a service station, a post office, and you're going to put a possible rental place right in the middle of businesses like that? Again, with being the downtown that the city fathers, and I guess you would say mothers nowadays.
It is a commercial use. It's just like downtown Georgetown, there are apartments over virtually every building down here, but it's all commercial use. That's what B3 is.
Yes, I get that, but B1 is one we know what its use will be.
Well, if that's neighborhood commercial, it serves just the immediate neighborhood. You don't need that in downtown Stampin' Ground, it's just serving, I mean, that just, that would not be appropriate.
And that's just the mentality of Stampin' Ground, we're a neighborhood, not a city. I mean, we all love each other, we've got the.
That's not the legal definition of it, so.
Well, no, no, it probably isn't. Well, speaking of legal, you know, we've pointed out numerous times, you all have the comprehensive plan. Well, I sat on the Great Scott Plan and we spent about a year and a half doing that. And I, gladly, I can say, I realized through that, you don't have to follow the comprehensive plan. It's not mandated, it's asked that you try to follow it if you can, but it's not mandated. I would just ask you, listen to people that live down there, how they feel about all this. Another thing, this is one I hadn't thought of until coming up here, somebody mentioned about four o'clock this afternoon. You've got to think strategically where's that? And you've got to think, sadly, in the world we live in today. Matter of fact, I think Georgetown just had something related to this a couple nights ago with the police. You are within steps from a school property. Short-term rental isn't like living in the apartments across the street that get background checks. Pedophile could rent that property and he'd have immediate access to children coming and going on the school grounds. I hadn't thought about that, because I'm just a new parent. I haven't had to think about those things too much. My child's not that old yet, so sadly I had to, but that's something that was a real concern of some people today. Lastly, important to life of the city is, is B1, as I said, is explicit. You know what's going to be in there. You know its future, what its possible conditional uses are. It provides for retail and consumer services for the neighborhood consumption. That's the definition from that, the legal definition, neighborhood consumption, which benefits the city economically. That's a real important thing. It was mentioned in up here, if we follow the plan, it's going to economically help Stampin' Ground. It won't. If we lose another business that the money that's solely made on that business property goes out of town, I apologize, I don't know, he may live in town, I don't know, but the renter money's not going to be here. The city has no way to tax Airbnbs or short-term rentals. It charges a mere $50 to even have a business that needs to limit, so we're not making money that way, but we would make money if people had some type of store in there that people were going in, plus it would provide for the community to have a place to go. It was mentioned, this would be a park-and-walk business possibly. Stampin' Ground needs a park-and-shop business. They need businesses to stay alive for our economy down there. I don't know if you saw the report when they released their budget this year. I mean, Rob, sad to say, you know, I'm sure, are both sad that they don't have much money down there now. They're barely making budget. And now we're going to take another possible business out of there, possible building that could be a business, and make it a limited use that won't benefit the city at all. I'll just read the rest of this, so I apologize. "B3 would allow specialty department stores, which honestly would not benefit our community. It could even possibly understand future conditional use, may not even be a business that benefits anyone in the city." I mean, conditional use, we just saw it, it's open-ended. I mean, just has to go before these hard workers, and if it's a thing they think's good at the time, it could be put in place. Could actually be an economic loss for some of us, is we already have, we already have several Airbnbs owned by several owners down there. You know, somebody made a joke about the chicken thing a while ago. Luckily, those chicken places are chains, because competition right next door doesn't hurt them. But when you get on a local level and you have sole owners of Airbnbs, it hurts them. And eventually, that will lose money that we know is going to our economy right now. I mean, yeah, probably Airbnb would, what, they buy a gallon of gas because they drove down there at night, they may buy some snacks at DG and then leave. I mean, it's not going to help our economy to have that down there and to lose a business face. And I wish I had it, but I left it on the car, but Stampin' Ground doesn't have business spaces. There was somebody just posted on the third, "I'm looking for a commercial space in Stampin' Ground that I could open a business." If this goes to an Airbnb, it'd be one less place that somebody could do that in Stampin' Ground. And I apologize, since I'm done, if I rambled. It's just, a lot of us in Stampin' Ground, we really love Stampin' Ground. But every little thing that nicks at Stampin' Ground being able to sustain themselves or fund themselves or have things for their citizens, every little business we lose, it just takes away from that. Sorry. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. We have anyone else would like to make a statement?
I'm just rearranging, but I will speak further unless anybody else would like to. Okay, Mr. Perry, excuse me. Mr. Perry? No, no, thanks for being here, and I was glad I spoke with you probably a couple of weeks ago and.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that was me. Yeah.
Very informative.
Yeah, no, thank you. And while Mr. Perry does bring up some good points and concerns, as staff, I just have to remind the board, ourselves, and those in attendance, that we are not here to discuss the concept of what this person may or may not wish to do. Through our research and our recommendations and the comprehensive plan, et cetera, we are here to discuss not what maybe this business or this parcel will be used for tomorrow. But again, you know, it could be tomorrow, Mr. Bradley, whoever else may turn around and sell it, and this idea goes nowhere.
I want everybody to be successful.
I promise. But we also are looking at what could be best for a community and those that come up around it in the next five, 10, 20, 50 years. As such, you know, just to clarify, when we say park-and-walk, we want to encourage the general public to, okay, I want to go to the bank, I'm going to get some money out, and I'm going to go down to the dress shop. Or, I'm going to go and get my haircut, and after that, I'm going to walk over and get a sandwich. That's the intention of when I say park-and-walk, is that you would actively participate in multiple businesses within that scope. So I just wanted to clarify that. Again, in any use that may or may not fit the language of the intent of the zoning ordinance, again, as I said before, if this property were to be redeveloped, a development plan would have to be submitted, and that development plan would be held against these standards and even beyond the ones you see in front of you currently. Again, you know, we would take a look at, is this use, this structure, this traffic flow, this, you know, the intent of this business or service, does it fit our future land use map and our development plan and the zoning as it's set for? So essentially, any remodeling of this space or repurposing is multiple checks and balances in front of it. But at the same time, not to be, you know, super limiting in my language, we do want to encourage diverse business and growth down the road, irregardless of Mr. Bradley or anybody's immediate concept, because to be fair, at this step, they are not beholden to that. If they were to receive approval of this zone change, they are not beholden to that idea. They could change their idea tomorrow.
The, B3, I mean, am I misinterpreting that it actually expands the number of opportunities for what businesses could go in there versus the B1 that it is currently?
It does, and it hasn't been too long since there was a potential zone change to B1 in front of you all, just outside of Stampin' Ground proper near Betsy Way.
Yep, great crossing, yep.
Yes, and we had a discussion at length of what defines, you know, neighborhood commercial in that sense. Neighborhood commercial, again, is really just meant to serve that immediate area. You know, this, this district is intended to bring people in from maybe, you know, just outside the perimeter, et cetera. Again, stop, stay a while, enjoy, you know, whether it be park space, or I just dropped my kid off at school, now I can go to the post office. That sort of thing. I mean, again, and it does add a limited residential component.
And I under, I mean, I understand the desire certainly to have a bank back in there, if, when that expires to two and a half years, you have to have a bank that wants to come in there, obviously. And to have businesses in there, I guess the way I'm viewing it, this expands the opportunity for the types of businesses that could be there, and it's been sitting vacant since 2021. On the market, you said for how long, a year and a half?
Four hundred and forty-something days.
Okay, so a year and a half without any other business interest there, so it seems at least a good opportunity to, can stop the decline of the property, right, and put some functionality in it.
I mean, all I'll say to that matter is, you know, any property sale, it's a foot race, you know? Whether it's a, just a simple purchase or a redevelopment, an application for rezoning, you know, it's property owner rights. But, and also to speak to the concerns of types of establishments, after listening to concerns of, you know, citizens and questions of you all, this use would not eliminate the allowance of any of the things that anybody has been concerned about.
And being a zone change, all we're doing is recommending to Stampin' Ground, and then they have to approve it.
Yes, it would go to municipalities as well.
So all we're doing is making recommendations to Stampin' Ground. We're not trying to take their decision away from them at all.
Correct.
So if Stampin' Ground wants to keep it that way, Stampin' Ground can continue to keep it that way.
Correct, absolutely.
Their elected officials can make that choice.
Thank you for making that point. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Perry?
Just a question, just because it does seem very novel. With that passing for the entertainment and amusement, can you give me best-case scenario of an entertainment and worst-case you've seen for entertaining amusement people have asked to put in places in Scott County?
Sadly, I'll be honest with you, it's, that's not something we have a whole lot of, you know, requests for. But I grew up here, I know a lot of people grew up here, we've had multiple bowling alleys come and go. I'm sure we had other places like that, you know, at some time. Now, to, again, to your concern of the language, we would have to look at the extent of the impact of, you know, what that type of establishment would create. Would the size and scale and the amount of traffic coming and going from that area be inappropriate or unsafe? Okay, maybe, maybe we're not going to have a 25-lane bowling alley there. But, you know, something of that sort, you know, specifically to where you would go there and you would hang out and enjoy, whether it be, you know, maybe, you know, like the Kentucky Theater, you know, a small movie theater, things of that nature. I agree, it is a little bit open-ended, but we have to lean on the standards and the review checkpoints as they're set, so.
Rita Jones, 402 Old Oxford Road, Georgetown. And I'm a, I'm the realtor for Butch and Linda Grisell who owned this property. Mr. Bradley's bought it under contract contention upon getting the zone change. I must be a bad realtor, because we've had it on the market for 440 days, open to, and it's been listed as commercial, so it's open to all the commercial interests that hopefully would come to Stampin' Ground. Nothing blights a city more than vacant property. And this property is going downhill. Butch and Linda are elderly, they're trying to get rid of a lot of their property, and get rid of a lot of their property, and this being one of them. The financial institution left there for a reason, there wasn't enough depositors. And in two and a half years, if somebody approaches Kevin, I'm sure he'd be glad to make a buck, and he would probably be glad to do that. As far as it being an entertainment-type place, this isn't big enough for anything like that. You would starve to death trying to entertain in this smaller building as this is. As far as there being a pedophile renting a short-term rental, there's all kinds of houses around the school that pedophiles could rent long-term rentals. So I don't know that that should be something we should really worry about. Taxing a short-term rental, if Stampin' Ground wants to pass a tax on the hospitality, lots of communities do that already. So that would be a form of income for them. But I'm just here, if anybody has any questions for the owners.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Do I have to say two more sentences?
Sure.
Maybe some, some background about, I'm sorry, the property itself. I personally, on the commission, passed Linda's number off to two people. One a bakery, and one a dress lady who had jewelry and stuff. She eventually, I think, went to your red cottage. They were both very interested. When that property was bought, it was immediately put on the market for three times what it's paid for. That's why we never had any businesses move down there. And I heard Chuck about the pedophile. I won't say where that hurts me in my heart, but when they live in a place...
But you brought it up.
No, 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 no. What hurt, what hurt my heart was, oh, well, they live in buildings next door, and they live in apartments, but they're required by law to register themselves as a sex offender. So if they're, right, Mr. Perkins? So if they're living in those buildings, they by law, matter of fact, they arrested one in the trailer court last summer, because they register where they're at. But short-term rental, they don't have to register where they're staying overnight. They don't have to register where they're traveling to. So that's not something we're chuckling over, because we do have ways in our Commonwealth that actually says, we have to know where you're at, because you're a risk to the community. Thank you.
I'm sure I'll respond.
I've got a question, so you go right ahead.
Name's Cody Meadows, 3177 Main Street, Stampin' Ground. Something I want to bring up is, this has a drive-through, and we're kind of limited in...
Excuse me, did you, you didn't sign in?
Oh, I did hit it. No, I did not. I did, well, I read.
Do you swear?
I swear, yes, sir.
Your name is being played.
Cody Meadows. I'm sorry, I didn't sign in. I'm just questioning, is, we turn it to a B3, I think you said that it can't be a fast food, like a high-access traffic?
Yeah, and no one could have been asked.
It's already set up for a drive-through. Wouldn't it, you know, to expand business? Wouldn't we want to look at a different zone? Maybe a, I don't know, maybe McDonald's wants to move in there.
Staff doesn't drive the choice of zones.
Right.
Based on the applicant and their peril.
But it limits the B3, that it cannot be a drive-through for a restaurant of high traffic, correct?
It discourages it. There are certain business models that may be lower impact, like there are restaurants out there where you can order online, or on an app, or call in, like pizza places kind of do that now. If it were a drive-up, it's supposed to, you know, you pick up your order. But we wouldn't expect or necessarily encourage there to be a McDonald's that's going to have 70 cars in line at noon.
I was just thinking that, maybe, that B3 ain't the best zone. Maybe we should look at a different one.
Well, gladly, if such a business were to purchase it after Mr. Bradley, we would be more than glad to entertain a development plan and review.
Gotcha.
But we want to make sure it's appropriate.
Okay.
We wouldn't want to put you in a bind, again, by putting a...
That's all I wanted to bring up.
I don't do many drive-throughs, so I'm struggling. McDonald's is easy to handle.
Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A, yes. I don't believe this is a very rare addition to Chicago.
If it's Chick-fil-A, I'm all for it.
You've got a traffic problem.
That'd be awesome. Rob Jones, I live at 132 Mulberry Street, Stampin' Ground.
Rhett, I don't know if I heard you right, but you said it's limited residential use. So could this turn into a permanent residence in a B3?
It would allow for permanent residential use. Now, yourself and many other people understand that, again, even with Mr. Bradley's plan, this would have to be evaluated by building inspection. Now, say if this structure were to be removed, and medium, you know, density residential were put in there, such a development would have to meet our review and standards, because when you're talking about putting, you know, an average of two cars per dwelling unit or something, now you have to figure out parking and traffic flow for 12 vehicles, et cetera. That would be a review process. Now, you know, if somebody wanted to take this building down entirely with proper permits and financing and build themselves a house, they could.
Which is probably, it's probably...
I don't require our ordinance allowing just regular residential in the B3 zone.
Well, it's through development process.
That's a traditional thing that we do in other floors. That's not, I don't think, a provided use, a permitted use in the B3 zone.
It's with, it's with the planning development. If I may, I have not sworn in yet.
You're sworn in all the time.
As a staff, you don't have to swear. You're permanent.
But, so where we're reading out in our zoning ordinance is Section 4.43, B3 Central District. Under 4.431B, planning development projects with commercial and high-density residential use is only. The procedure under Section 2.32 shall be followed. And so, under a separate procedure, you're allowed to take a look, again, at commercial and high-density residential use. And I believe what you're pointing to is where it's commercial and high-density in partnership with one another.
Yeah, that's correct.
Where you have a restaurant or something on a lower level, like we do in town.
Yeah, like what we do in town.
There has been a few communities in State of Kentucky that's allowed people to do reverse zoning, where the business is on the second floor and the residential can be on the first floor.
Yeah.
So there are different ways of doing that. In the end, it's the same result. You have both business and residential together.
But, the size of this lot is going to limit, you know, what, what can go in there in residential scale.
And the size of the building limits what can be done currently.
The applicant is requesting in light of our ordinance is the common plan.
Yeah.
So it's not like we can tell Mr. Bradley, no, you need to ask for something else. If he asks for this, and it's appropriate under our plan and regs, then we say okay.
Then that's appropriate.
But, so, so it couldn't be a permanent residence, just to get back to my question.
Again, we review it under the procedure found in Section 2.32. But what Mr. Perkins mentioned, what I just read, it relies on a combination of commercial and high-density. And so, you could have a permanent residence, but only if it's a permanent business to go along with it. It's similar, again, to, you know, if our team's departments...
So does the Airbnb thing fall under that also?
That's not a permanent residence.
I would defer to the wisdom of the planning commission.
I would set it as a permanent.
That wouldn't be a permanent residence.
No, we, we, we define short-term residential as 30 days or less, or short-term rental, rather, as 30 days or less. That's stated in, in our ordinances, as they play, you know, colloquially, we'll call them Airbnbs. B3 does allow for it. It allows for, you know, the whole unit to be used, or individual rooms within a certain limitation. Again, 30 days or less is how we define short-term rental.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Couple of y'all know the history of Stampin' Ground, and how we used to be a thriving community, and it's always been my goal, and I think David sees the same way now. We would love to see it be a thriving community again. I would love to be able to just stay in Stampin' Ground, go get what I need, and never have to leave. But fortunately, businesses are leaving, like Dale said, every day. It's hard to get a business to come down there if you don't have a building ready for it. I think changing this to the B3 is the wrong thing for Stampin' Ground. You've got residents behind it, you've got residents across the street, why do you want to put it to where there could be a residence also? And it could. If it goes to B3, they could come back, and it could go to a residence. That's happened throughout, I don't know, the last 40, 50 years in Stampin' Ground, that businesses close, so the owners take it, put somebody in there living. Next thing you know, it's grandfathered in. I would hate to see that happen to this building here. This is the only chance that we have to ever get a bank back in Stampin' Ground. No bank is going to put the dollars into it to come and try to build a bank in Stampin' Ground. If we have one ready, they may come. And Mr. Bradley said he would rent it to them, and I appreciate, I appreciate your interest in Stampin' Ground. That tipples my heart, because that's, Stampin' Ground, I love Stampin' Ground. That's where I'm from. I grew up Georgetown, but I'm from Stampin' Ground. So I would love to see it stay B1. We don't have that many B1 properties in Stampin' Ground. Once you change it, it's probably never going to go back to B1.
But B3 would allow for a bank as well, right?
Yes.
So it wouldn't preclude a bank coming in, and it would at least get the property...
That's the downtown classification. B1 is not. B1's a neighborhood classification.
Well, it is a neighborhood.
It's like the old...
The neighborhood's right across the street, Charlie. What are you talking about? The neighborhood's the whole city of Stampin' Ground.
I think what B3 does, the way I'm viewing it, is opens the door for opportunity for more types of businesses to come in there. He's not going to redo the interior, so it opens it up for two and a half years when that deed restriction expires.
Oh, he'll have to redo the interior.
Well, he'll put walls up. What I mean is, it would be maybe not quite as expensive for a bank to come in, but the reality of it is, the longer it sits now, the more decrepit it's going to become, and it would be cost prohibitive for any business to go in and redo it, right? So the way I'm viewing it, this opens the door to more opportunities in terms of potential businesses that could come in, in the future, including a bank when the deed restriction expires. And it, it allows something to be done with the building, so it doesn't just sit there and continue to go into repair, which we all know, a building or house, it's vacant, right, and it deteriorates. People need to be in it.
Well, when you don't take care of it. And I, I say, that's current owner's problem there. They should have been taking care of the building the whole time. So it should have never got run down to the beginning with, in the first place. But you just don't have that much room in Stampin' Ground for businesses to grow. This is one of them.
But wouldn't there still be opportunity for a business to grow there? It just, it opens more opportunity.
I don't know if I agree with that. I guess you could.
It allows for more different types of things, including a bank.
Yeah. But you open up that resident part.
I think, I think that's, that's the argument that all of you are making, that you don't want to take that chance of using commercial.
You're going to lose that opportunity to keep.
Why ask if it was a different zone, or a different way to, not a B3, but a different zone?
Right.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm the Stampin' Ground representative here, and I guess I need to speak my piece here also. I agree with Dale Perry and Rob, you know, you know, I agree all, everything y'all said. I also agree with Kevin Bradley. I feel like he's going to buy this, he's going to turn this into Airbnb till the deed restrictions are up. And then, I know Kevin pretty well, we're all, you know, anybody, Rob, you own rental property, I own rental property, everybody's in it to make money. He'll make a lot more money from a bank than he will from an Airbnb.
I agree.
So I would rather see something in there as the Airbnb now, than to let it rot down, and then nothing be there.
And I don't have a problem with the Airbnb at all, don't have no problem. But you change that zone, that opens up that turning into a residence. It could turn into a residence.
I don't think it will, Rob, because it'll have to come back in front of us.
But it couldn't turn into a permanent residence.
It'll have to come back in front of us, and, and, and I don't, I mean...
Would it have to come back in front of you?
To change to a permanent residence, yeah. This is just temporary residential.
I, I mean, I guess it's possible, Rob, you're right, it's possible. But I don't know anybody that's going to want to buy a house that's got a post office on one side and a gas station on the other.
And a baseball in the kitchen.
Yeah.
I don't know, we got one on Main Street already that was a bank, and low and behold, it's a house, and they live there.
It would have to come back before us to rezone again to be permanent residential.
Yeah. I mean, I just, I just feel like it's a good thing for the community, for right now. I agree with you 1,000%. I would love to see a bank in there, because I'm down there, I own a business down there, and I got commercial property down there.
I'd love to see a bank in there. If this goes, we'll never get a bank. It's just...
I totally disagree with you, Rob.
I disagree, Rob, but... And that, and that's the great thing about this. That's why we're having discussions. We can all disagree, and that's the great...
And you and I agree to disagree all the time.
I live there, I know, I know the way it's been. It's hard to get a business back once it gets to where somebody can live in.
And, and I go back to that comment, Stampin' Ground's going to decide this.
Stampin' Ground's got to find, do the final...
The people who vote for it are the ones who say this is okay.
But, but I will say this, with me sitting up there for eight years like you guys have been, I appreciate all y'all, thank y'all for what you're doing. It's, it's not an easy job sitting up there every time, so I appreciate y'all being up there. But when you make a zone change, it very rarely goes back to anything any different. Very rarely. I think I, in the eight years I was there, I had one. And that was one of the properties that you just heard tonight. It was business out in front of Mallard Point, and it came back and went to Ag, and I was so tickled to see that happen. But it very rarely goes back, so.
But that supports what you're saying, because that means it wouldn't go back to residential, right? It would remain business and expands the type of businesses that could be in.
Yeah, but it probably would never go back to B1.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and you know, Rob, as I do, Stampin' Ground has the worst zoning of anything in the county. There's so much down there that is zoned wrong anyway. I think this is the right zone.
We've tried here to get, get stuff done. It's hard, hard to get stuff done, so.
Oh, I know.
So, all right, appreciate you guys.
Mr. Bradley, should we not change this, you know, and he decides not to purchase it, because it's, doesn't go to, to B3, and he says, no, I need it at B3, so I'm going to walk away from it. So what is an empty building going to do to benefit Stampin' Ground for the next two and a half or year and a half? You know, it's going to continue to deteriorate. At least now, you're, you've got someone that's going to put some money into it and, and have it decent looking.
I'm going to disagree with that, because you're making assumptions now. So I'll disagree with that. That's an assumption. You don't know he's going to put any money in it, which had been said in this meeting already. He could get this zone changed today and sell it tomorrow.
That's true.
So don't make assumptions.
And, and I think that's a good point, not to make assumptions, right? I mean, because we're going to assume this is going to be a permanent residence, and that doesn't make sense either. You know, I just want to address some of the fear that's kind of been thrown out here. You know, all I'm hearing, all I'm hearing, all I'm hearing from, you know, the zoning staff, is B3 opens it up to more. I'm telling you, my attend, that that's, that's what I'm going to do, if you all grant, you know, the zone change. And here's the thing, you know, as far as, you know, we don't know what it's going to look like on the outside, well, here's what I can tell you. I have every vested interest, right, to make this the absolute crown jewel, to make this be the most pristine property in the entire town. And if you're concerned about that, you know, I have over 13 years of property experience, management experience, I own several rental homes, I know how to take care of property, I know how to, know how to get things done. You know, the other thing I would address, too, is, I understand that everybody would like to have it, you know, be a bank, or have it be a store, or what have you. But here, here's what I can tell you. Number one, Rita, just let me know, there were no other offers on this property at all, in the entire time it was on the market. So that tells me two things. Tells me I should have negotiated harder. That's the first thing. And the second thing it tells me is, businesses were not willing to take a stab, right? They were, they were not willing to locate there. And I just want to take something, again, that's going to be pretty decrepit, and that, you know, if you let this thing set for another two and a half years, which is how long is left on that deed restriction, it will not look like it looks like today. It needs to have some, some maintenance taken care of. You know, at the moment, like I said, there's no air circulating on the inside. Ruffer told me he was surprised it wasn't already leaking. I think we all know, if you get a little bit of moisture, and you don't have any ventilation, that turns the mold really quickly, and you're going to have a building that's going to be unusable. But really, all I can tell you is what I'm going to do, and you can either take me at my word, or not take me at my word, that's fine. But I, I promise you, it's, it's going to look good, it's going to look nice, it's going to draw people to town. And the reason I'm seeking the B3 is because that, that is the only zone that you can run Airbnb in. You can't run an Airbnb in a B1, you can't run an Airbnb in a B2, you can only do it in a B3. And again, when it comes down to, you know, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Rhett, like, I know Georgetown, you go down here and stand, it is all B3. You go to Sadieville, most of Sadieville is B3, too. But you go to Stampin' Ground, there is no B3. But I think everybody would, would argue that you can do a lot more, and there's not any, any of these businesses downtown that Stampin' Ground wouldn't welcome. So, but, anyway, I appreciate your consideration, and if anybody doesn't have any other questions, I'll sit down and be quiet.
If Dale has something else.
Yes, sir.
Here, I'll scoot up as close as I can, just so you know. So, one is a clarification from our esteemed and knowledgeable planning zoning here in the middle. I've heard three or four times from you all, and even out here in the audience, he could tear it down tomorrow. And I don't have it in front of me, Steve, but if he tears it down, doesn't B3, it looks pretty, little bitty building on a nice big piece of property, doesn't B3 allow that building to be rebuilt to 90% of that spot, that lot?
He would have to come back with a development plan to get approved to do that.
But it, but it doesn't mean it can't happen, right?
Well, anything could happen, but you'd have to come by, it would have to come before this commission.
I think we all know in this county, a lot of things happen.
This could, it would have to come before the commission again, and you'd have an opportunity to speak on whatever that development plan looked like. But it couldn't just be torn down and rebuilt to be...
But they could come with a beautiful six-story building that you all think are great, and it could take up 90%. That's what I'm asking, right?
No.
No?
No.
Why wouldn't it? Why couldn't, if the order, if the zone says it can be up to 90%?
Well, one, one thing, it couldn't go six stories.
Six stories is what that one's allowed, I believe. I can look that up real quick. B3, max height, six stories. It's on your old page, for 75 feet. And can take up, there's my answer right there. Sorry, it didn't ask it.
I stand corrected.
Max building can be 90% of the lot.
So you wouldn't want a six-story building sitting there zoned B3 for businesses to come into?
No, because you talk about dilapidation. And about the thing about putting fear in, oh, Stampin' Ground, just let it keep falling down. There's actually a lovely little statute now that Stampin' Ground adopted, saying, we can go after dilapidated and non-used properties. They adopted it, I don't know, four years ago, maybe, five years ago? So no, if Stampin' Ground, the commission wants to start making, or clean up the property, it can be done. So just take that fear out there. And again, I'll reiterate...
Or the owners could just tear it down.
What's that?
Or the owners could just tear it down, which will probably be cheaper than redoing it, right? Which then you're starting from ground zero, starting really to look at your real fears of it being completely demolished... Which then you're starting from ground zero, starting really to look at your real fears of it being completely demolished and coming back with a development plan for a six-story building.
At B1, I can see the canvas this big, B3, the canvas is unlimited, what they could build back.
You're making assumptions.
Well, so is a lot of other things we've heard today, a lot of assumptions of what will and won't happen.
Six-story building downtown Stampin' Ground is a pretty huge assumption.
I wouldn't think we'd be getting rid of a.
I can't see one here with more than me.
I wouldn't think we'd be getting rid of a hundred and fifty acres of property to bring, bring something in we don't need, but that's besides the point. And just again, to take away, yes, nobody bought that property, because three hundred and twenty thousand dollars was ridiculous for that property. When you're trying to make a small business plan to come into a small community, to serve a small community, who could afford that to buy the property?
Mr. Bradley, apparently.
Yeah, obviously, yeah, well, I guarantee he's not at three hundred, last time she said it was two.
Whatever he offered, they took it.
I've got somewhere to throw all my money, finally.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. You got a vault to keep it all, Kevin.
Any other questions or comments?
I was going to just make a point of clarification, I do have the zoning ordinance's, uh, schedule of area and dimension regulations here. And the six stories and seventy-five feet applies to professional office, the neighborhood commercial zone, which is its present zone right now, highway commercial, which is what you see around mains, around, um, interstates, B4, which is what Falls Creek is, uh, B5, which is where Walmart is, and then the industrial zone. Under the B3 zone, there is none, one specified. However, in the specific items pertaining to height, buildings may be up to fifty feet and what if they contain any part residential, they need to adhere to the standards set forth in the R2 zoning district, which states that the maximum height of buildings may be thirty feet or two stories in height. So in no instance, at least in my interpretation of the ordinance and of the B3 district and all the language I just spouted out, if this has a residential component, it must adhere to the R2 standards, which is two stories or thirty feet. If it is a commercial component, then it's no greater than fifty feet in height and then we would be discussing the stories and we would be judging it off of, off of its own merit at that point. And if this is to be redeveloped, we need a development plan. It goes through our office for review, we do the same song and dance that we're doing tonight, just about something happened to the building or whatever circumstances happened, new tenant came in, we would be doing the same thing we're doing right now, just under different things.
But B1 would, the current zone would allow a six-story?
Six stories are seventy-five feet. Uh, the ninety percent coverage stamp is correct for the block coverage. Uh, that is more often seen in, in the city of Georgetown, where we have these very long narrow lots with these pre-existing buildings in it. So that does, that is accurate that it could be ninety percent coverage, however, we would be looking at for specific users when you're coming in. There are parking standards, so that space does need to be set aside for parking accordingly. And that also includes interior landscaping, BUA landscaping, and property perimeter landscaping.
Not in B3.
Not in B3, just kidding then. Well, then I got all excited about that thing. Thanks, Charlie. Anyway.
And like, and like Mr. Green has pointed out several times, it would still have to go before Stampin' Ground Commission to be approved.
Yes, this is just a recommendation that we then take to their legislative body for final adoption or consideration.
Yep.
And how many of the Stampin' Ground commissioners are here tonight, I'd like to know?
Yeah, that's a good question.
There are four city commissioners in the city of Stampin' Ground and the mayor.
There's possible future ones in, in the room.
Assumption.
And I apologize for the ninety percent, but to B1, only allows seventy-five percent of that property to be used for any type of building.
Are there any other questions for the staff? Or any other public comments to be made? Hearing none, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
You gonna close the hearing?
Uh, we gotta vote on it first. Do we have to vote on it before we close the hearing?
Yeah, I'm not so sure I've ever been clear on that. My thinking is, yes, you do.
Yes, I do vote, or yes, I do close it?
Excuse me, no, close the public hearing.
Okay.
And then you have your discussions, have your motions.
Okay.
Okay.
So I close the public hearing and I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval of ZMA 2024-42.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Ms. Singer and a second by Dan. Mr. Smith. All right, Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Jesse?
No.
Uh, Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Bradley, or you come see Mr. Perkins up here. All right, next item on the agenda is, um, another public hearing. So I will. Close the previous one, so we're gonna open a public hearing again for ZMA 2024-44 and PDP 2024-45. Uh, the Derringer property on Industry Road, uh, this is a zone map amendment for five acres from, uh, A1 agriculture to I1 light industry, preliminary development plan for two industrial buildings. Uh, one ten thousand square feet and the other sixty-four hundred square feet with associated parking, loading, and unloading areas located on Industry Road. Now, the, um, zone change is the only thing in the public hearing, is that correct? But can we hear both of them under the public hearing?
You can certainly do that, the only one's required to be part of the public hearing is the zone change.
Okay.
That doesn't mean you can't hear.
We, we don't need to vote on that and then close it and then hear the.
Organizational wise, that's probably the, the best, but no, that's not, that's not.
Not necessary.
As long as, you know, the thing doesn't get so confused, we really don't know what we're doing.
Right.
Which is always possible.
For a minute's sake, it may be beneficial to separate, but for your guys' sake, it may be beneficial to combine, is that your discretion?
Okay.
Great.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we'll proceed with, uh, the zoning map amendment as described. It is a zone change request from A1 to I1 for a property that is five acres located off of Industry Road. Uh, it is, uses an access easement through an adjoining parcel to Industry Road and then Industry Road ultimately connects to Cherry Blossom Way, which is the major arterial in that area. So this is an aerial shot here, uh, the area in question is outlined in red and the area that is in that kind of grayed-out area is those properties that have been annexed into city limits. So this property does adjoin city limits to the north. So in this instance, we would typically require, um, if this was ultimately improved, when it was taken to the city of Georgetown or its legislative body, it would be annexed in at the same time in two subsequent ordinances. Uh, zooming in further, I'm just gonna, next slide, thank you. Uh, so this is it a little bit more zoomed in. As you can see, a lot of this area is developed along Industry Road. This is one of the few remaining parcels that is, um, both undeveloped and not annexed into the city limits. Next slide. As Rhett had described previously, but I'll run through it since it's been a little bit. Uh, there are findings required when reviewing zoning or, or zoning map amendments, uh, finding either Part 1, that it is in compliance with, or in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan, or in absence of that evidence being found, uh, that, um, one or more of the following is applicable, that the existing zoning classification given to the properties inappropriate and inappropriate, the proposed zoning classification isn't more appropriate alternative, or Item B, that there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area that were not anticipated at the time of the comprehensive plan and which have substant, substantially altered the basic character of the area such that the existing zone is now inappropriate and a more appropriate one is, is viable. Uh, next slide. This is in, uh, a screenshot of the, uh, future land use map as part of the 2024 adopted comprehensive plan that was adopted by this board in July of 2024 and then taken to each respective, uh, legislative body. We are working with Sadieville to finalize theirs. Um, as you can see, this gray color is the industrial future land use designation and this site is in the industrial future designation. Uh, properties around it are also industrially used and have been for such time. I believe the name Industry Road kind of implies that this has had an industrial component for an extended period of time. And so, even if this was not aligning with that, the industrial uses surrounding would kind of constitute a proper justification as, uh, for rezoning this property. Uh, next slide, and next slide there. So this is their com, proposed concept plan, I'll talk about it momentarily when we get to the development plan. Next slide. So, uh, this does, staff does conclude that this aligns with the state statutes specifically, uh, 10213, Part 1, that it does align with the comprehensive plan, as the future land use map does identify this as industrial zone and this is a proposed industrial zone rezoning. As such, uh, staff recommends approval of the zone change request, uh, subject to three conditions of approval. Uh, the first of which is that they annex into the city of Georgetown upon such time that public sewer is available to the property. Public sewer has not made it all the way up Industry Road and we are uncertain about when that would be occurring. Uh, that is a conversation that they would be needing to have with Georgetown Municipal, which is the sewer provider for the area. At this time, it is deemed to be unnecessary to require them to rezone, or to annex into the city because upon annexation, that means that the sewer service is ready. And at this time, that is not the option, so we recommend that it just be used part of their condition that at whatever point sanitary line makes it up there, it tags in and it gets annexed into the city, whenever that point would be, if ever that happens. Uh, the second two items are just pertaining to returning to us for their preliminary development plan, which I will speak to momentarily, and any other applicable regulations of the zoning ordinance. Uh, within the, um, the staff report, I do talk a little bit about some, uh, landscaping that would be required and additional, uh, improvements that need to be made and other kind of components that I will talk more so in the actual development plan component. But besides all that, that concludes my zone change conversation and I will entertain comments about that before we step into the development plan conversation.
So, i, is there sewer running up Industry Road partially or?
Yes.
Okay, so some of those businesses are hooked up to the sewer, it's not just running out on a bypass and?
That is correct. To my understanding, as with conversations with Georgetown Municipal, it is, a portion of those properties are on sewer, but lines have not been extended to the point that this would be an appropriate connection to make, to require them make.
Is it, does sewer plant out on Cherry Blossom, the plant two or what do they call it?
I believe it is in Lanes Run, or at least is accessed in part through Lanes Run.
Any other questions for Elise? Is Mr. Derringer here or representative?
Back there in the corner.
Uh, his engineer is here.
Okay.
Good evening, Steve Baker, Midwest Engineering, I'm working for Mr. Derringer on the, on the concept plan, the development plan. So, um, be glad to answer any questions if you have about the, the development. Um, I think the three conditions of approval are, are certainly reasonable and have no issues with those, so.
What's his intent use?
His intent is to, uh, the, so there's two buildings, the smaller of the building, the one toward, closer to the front of the building, he, he would potentially occupy and move his excavation business based in there. And then he's building the second one just to kind of, uh, hopefully find a tenant for some type of light industrial use. He didn't really have, uh, someone, you know, signed up for that necessarily yet, but he's, he's just speculating that he would find somebody to, to use that property.
Just for the record, uh, most, all, all of those, um, uh, businesses up and down Industry Road are all, uh, I1 now. And why that whole road wasn't, uh, zoned I1 at the time it was developed is anybody's guess. We've had to go back and piecemeal some of them in there, so, um, it is, um, industry area out there and I1 would be appropriate.
I think after, if, assuming this one is approved, uh, there would only be one parcel left, one five-acre tract would be the only one left that's, that's still not I1, so that's correct, yeah.
We'll have to look at it at some point then. Okay, thank you, Mr. Baker.
You're welcome.
We have any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, do we need to vote on the zone change first before we hear the?
Close the public hearing and then?
The appropriate, okay, so I'm gonna close the, um, the public hearing, uh, for this, uh, development and I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval of ZMA 2024-44.
I'll second.
Uh, Mr. Green's already seconded.
No.
You're too late.
Let's peek up over there.
All right. Uh, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Ms. Singer?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. And then next is, um, PDP 2024-45 and this is, um, for the development portion of this same property.
All right, thank you. This is our, uh, required development plan that we had conditioned as condition two. This is a preliminary development plan for two industrial buildings, one of which measuring ten thousand square feet, the other measuring, uh, six thousand four hundred square feet with associated parking, loading, and unloading areas on the parcel that we just spoke about. Um, this is more so contingent upon, uh, rezoning with the appropriate legislative bodies. So we would be waiting and seeing when that, if that came through with their body before, uh, we would be entertaining any kind of final action, uh, for their development plan. But we may still proceed with reviewing its plan again contingent upon that rezoning. They are looking to have two light industrial users in the building, or am buildings on the property with associated parking circulation, uh, again, uh, all other acreages and accesses are applicable. They do request one waiver as part of this proposed development. Again, this is our property here. Next slide. And this is our proposed development here. Um, because of the kind of existing contour lines, I did kind of highlight the specific areas in question. Um, but I would first like to step back and talk about the road that this is working off of. Public maintenance for this road ends approximately five hundred feet south of the proposed entrance and then an access easement through the property that adjoins it to the north extends from that all the way up to service both this lot, the property itself that this easement is on, and the undeveloped five-acre parcel previously mentioned. This needs to be brought up to, um, to appropriate standards for industrial development and is preferred or required to be in alignment with the, with standards for county maintenance and county systems. So appropriate aggregate, uh, asphalt and everything like that. And so as part of this development, we would wanna see those improvements in there and we have included a condition that would, um, require said items. It is not listed in the staff report itself, this was something that we had identified at, uh, workshop as an item that had been accidentally dropped and so, uh, going forward, we would recommend an additional condition, specifically an additional condition number eleven that would talk about extending the public roadway to the driveway entrance and include a turnaround as part of that proposed development or improvement. Uh, if, once we get onto the property, there is a proposed driveway that is identified in blue that would service this proper, or the front building and the rear building with appropriate pull-off areas for, um, user parking as well as loading and unloading. Uh, the parking is located in front of the buildings themselves and then the buildings and then there's loading and unloading areas. There are no, um, there's no information at this time about how many proposed, um, employees are going to be out of these buildings, which is our primary metric for determining how much parking is truly required. So we would need to have some type of clarification of how many staff members are, uh, present on the property before we could make a determination on if sufficient parking was on the property. At this time, they, does show appropriate ADA accessibility, uh, they have exceeded that value, so unless they propose an exorbitant amount of staff on the property, the ADA should be appropriate at the three that they've provided. Moving onwards, next slide, uh, next, next slide, thank you. Um, there is landscaping requirements as part of this, uh, specifically landscaping is required, uh, for any portion or boundary that adjoins, um, agricultural zones and that includes, uh, one tree per forty feet of linear boundary planted at least thirty-five feet from the property. of linear boundary planted at least 35 feet from the property line. At this time, the development plan does show a buffer, but it does not show it in an appropriate location, as well as they've put a gap in where a drainage area is believed to be located. Next slide. When we're looking at the overall aerial of the property, you can kind of see in that orange circle there, in that darker patch there, that's approximately where that proposed or expected drainage area is. However, it's never been identified by a study that this would be an area that is drainage and should not be interfered with. And such, while the applicant does request a waiver to not have to put any plantings in this area, there's been no demonstration that this is a drainage area that should be not planted within, not affected. And so, staff ultimately recommends against that waiver request because of that lack of evidence constituting granting of a variance. Can we go back? Back, back? More? All right. That's great there. Furthermore, there would be additional landscaping that would be required along VUA areas, specifically to the north and everything like that, where installation of appropriate trees and other buffers would be expected and required, as well as interior landscaped areas are also required. Good. All right. So, for any open VUA of 6,000 feet or greater, interior landscaping is required at 10% of the total VUA. And in industrial areas, you do remove those areas that are used for loading, unloading, and other storage. So, at this point, they propose about 9,600 square feet of VUA that is not for loading and unloading, necessitating 964 square feet of interior landscaped areas and for interior landscaping trees. At this time, staffs identify that there is a deficit in the trees and the areas as required. And so, while variance has not been requested, staff would not recommend approval of a variance, and would instead require and expect that the applicant install the trees and interior landscaping as required by ordinance. Finally, the last item that has to do with landscaping is the minimum tree canopy requirements. As the property is completely redeveloped and no existing trees are proposed to remain, 10% of tree canopy area will be required on the property post-development. The applicant proposes the planting of 17,000, 17,000 square feet of tree canopy, which is equivalent to 6, to 7.85% of the total site area. And so, there will be additional tree plantings that would be required to satisfy the 10% requirement, which may be satisfied with the interior landscaped areas, as well as potential VUA perimeter buffering that would be required by ordinance. One final item of note that I felt was important to identify is that to the rear of these buildings, there are areas that have been identified as loading, storage areas. While not under current consideration, it's essential to highlight that outdoor storage in industrial zones requires a conditional use permit. So, if these areas are meant to hold canisters, equipment, anything like that where it is stored there, we would require a conditional use permit filed and approved by the Board of Adjustment prior to the start of using that for those uses. And at that time, we would expect that it would adhere to the standards set forth for outdoor storage in the I-1 zone, which includes, but is not limited to, not being visible from right-of-way or adjacent area of different zoning classification, screening to prevent visibility that may continue, earth mounds, plantings, fencing, and walls, and that the storage area meets the setback requirements. So, we would be reviewing that at the Board of Adjustment level. It's, again, it's not under consideration right now, but it is important that we identify that this would be something that we would expect of them if the rezoning went through and the development plan was approved. Ultimately, staff recommends, can we go forward? The approval of this development plan request with the 10 stated conditions on the staff report and the additional condition, so the first five are here, next slide. The next 10 are here, and I would like to identify condition 11, which would state that a public road to the driveway entrance would be required within that, and in that development, a proper turnaround would be available for emergency vehicles and other large vehicles to make turnarounds and exit the property safely without damaging other grasses and other kind of areas not made for cars. So, that would be an additional condition 11. It's not on the conditions of approval, Charlie. Yes, sir. Yep, I can definitely do that.
So, turnaround for emergency vehicles, their parking lot, would that count as that? Or do you, do you need another turnaround before you get to their property? Which, what are you saying there? Mr. Baker?
Would you?
So, we, I want to speak, we need to talk about that at the table, committee, fire department, talk about, they use a... So, if you look at the development plan, at the very end of the proposed road extension, where the access to the new buildings are, in the northern, northwest corner there. So, we've extended the road past, so you essentially do what they call a hammerhead turn for fire trucks. And we made sure that radius was wide enough to facilitate fire trucks.
Good enough. Thank you.
Now, in my notes from the workshop, it included a note that 10 was gonna be amended, the language on it.
Yes, that may be a more appropriate one to just amend that language.
Instead of adding an 11?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask one question about the road? So, so the, the area where the road is to be extended, there is an easement that we're taking advantage of, but that area is not part of this parcel. So, our client doesn't have the authority to dedicate that property, but he's, he's committing to essentially funding the road and building it to city standards, even though it would remain private until the owner of that actual parcel. If they wanted to dedicate it, you know, that would be their decision, I guess. But just, I just want to make sure in the conditions that they weren't being asked to dedicate right-of-way, because it's not his right-of-way to dedicate.
No.
So, do we need to amend 10, or add an 11, or both?
I'm working on some of that language.
Okay.
So, what's, what, need to address what Mr. Baker's saying, because that road's gonna go through property that they don't own.
We would expect that it would be, it is under a shared access of easement.
Yeah, okay.
So, we would expect that it would be improved. It would not be conditioned on dedication, but it would be expected to be improved to the standard set forth for industrial zone.
Okay. I think it makes sense to assume someday it would be a public road, and, and he wants to build it.
And if we can get it up to there, it can be up to the standard, and then it is a little bit of an easier adoption into the county road system upon proper time being passed and making sure that it's built to the proper standards.
All right. Mr. Baker, while they're working on that, does your client, does he own the property before you get back here to this one?
He does not.
Oh, he does not?
I think the, the, the current owners of both tracts are the same, but he has a contract to purchase just...
Oh, to sell that. I got you. All right. So, right now, it's owned by the same people?
Yeah.
All right. I was just gonna say, it looks like he would go ahead and zone this other one, Industry, at the same time, and that way, that would reduce that need for landscaping in there, and...
Yeah, if you look at the terrain of that property, it would make sense for those two lots to be developed together and not have that buffer in between. But we understand why it's, you know, it's part of the ordinance, so.
Okay. Apologize for everybody having to sit and wait. I thought we had this resolved Monday at the work session.
I believe we have found an appropriate condition 10 amendment. So, this would not be the inclusion of a condition 11. This would be amending the condition 10.
All right.
Call me out if I have it wrong. So, the language, can you please, Zach, can you go to the, keep going. Keep going. One more. That one. Stay, stop. Okay, so, the language would be, "The final development plan shall include plans for private roadway improvements," and then this is where the addition comes in, "to public road standards up to and including the driveway." Period. "Such improvements shall include a turnaround and shall be included in and completed as part of this development."
That sound all right, Mr. Baker? You can deal with that.
Does that make sense? Does that make sense to the board here? Is that satisfactory to everyone's standards?
Yeah.
Just bring it back, please. I've got to write it down.
She's got it there.
You didn't remember all that?
You know I did, but I'd just like to be sure.
Any questions from anyone else? All right, I will take a... I tell you what, Ms. Singer, if you will make a motion, and Mr. Green, if you will second it, we can, I've already got this made out.
Yeah, okay.
Continue on.
I will make a motion for approval of PDP 2024-45 with the additional note that Elise just stated. You want to say it again for the record?
Yes, I'm gonna, like, Charlie's just mouthing the whole time.
Number 10?
I don't want it on.
I know you don't want it on. So, for clarity, it would be condition 10 amended to say, "The final development plan shall include plans for private roadway improvements to public road standards up to and including the driveway." Period. "Such improvements shall include a turnaround and be included in and completed as part of this development."
Where'd that language come from? About that driveway, and that's on the north boundary of the lot. But what did you just add?
If he'd had his microphone on, he would've known. He's your stepdad.
Help your elders.
All right, while they're, while they're finishing that...
Are we good with that? Yeah, we're just making sure that it is properly noted on the conditions of approval sheet to make sure that we don't have anyone who's less than...
I would second the motion by Ms. Singer.
Thank you. So, I will now take a vote. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. Thank you, Baker.
Very good. Thank you.
Oh, oh, oh. All right.
Good Lord in heaven. Good Lord in heaven.
Okay.
I'm assuming the rest of you folks are here because of one of these last two items here. Or you're just staying here for the fun of it. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. We need a motion?
A motion to adjourn for 10 minutes?
So, returning at 8:50, or 7:55. Sound appropriate?
Yes, a motion. Who wants a second?
All in favor, say aye. All right. We'll be back in 10 minutes. Well, I mean, there's no reason not to hear the zone check. All right, we, I will call this meeting back into order, and Elise?
Thank you. This is a preliminary development plan identified as PDP 2024-46, a development plan for a six, 5,000, no, 56,000 square foot grocery store with attached liquor store and a 7,000 square foot retail tenant on a 12.1 acre portion of a larger property located off of Frankfurt Road, and it does have some connections to Ferguson Lane. This is a property that is split-zoned with the front portion off of Frankfurt Road, or parallel to Frankfurt Road, being zoned B2 highway commercial, and then the rear portion being zoned B5 general commercial park, surrounded by some agricultural zones, residential zones, and then B5 and B2 as well. They proposed the, the construction of a grocery store with its attached liquor store, and then a one freestanding retail tenant at this time. And they include 342 parking spaces, and then access would be granted through a private street to McClellan Circle or Frankfurt Road, as well as a potential connection to Ferguson Lane that is also being proposed at this time. There are two waivers that are being included as part of this development plan, the first of which is to be property perimeter landscaping along arterial, so that you are not accessing, and the second of which being the property perimeter landscaping requirement along agricultural zones, or between commercial, develop, and agricultural zones. This is the property here. To the north, we have the Great Crossing School Campus, which includes Western Elementary, Great Crossing High School, and the Alcorn School. To the south, we have the McClellan View Residential Subdivision and Northside Christian Church. To the west, there's Farm. To the east, there is the Buchanan Property and the Ward Hall Estates. And then catty corner to this is Cane Wood Center, and then the remaining portions of Cane Wood itself. Next slide. This is our zoning layout, just so you can better illustrate what the zoning situation is looking like on this property. This property is already annexed into the city limits and adjoins non-city limit adjoining properties and everything like that. Next slide. This is our proposal here. I do have a zoomed-in moment, but I just wanted to illustrate how this is just a feature of a larger intent to develop the remaining portions of this property. We've already had a subdivision plat be filed for review in the November meeting that would be working on getting the anchor lot separated from the outlots, separated from the potential area of future development that they've identified. But again, we are primarily concerned with the, the anchor tenant lot that I will be discussing today. Next slide. This, oh, back. So, this is our, our operator here, again, a over 5,000, or 50,000 square foot building with parking and its, its tenants and everything like that. They would also be working on putting the access drive-in and all the access points that I will talk about in a moment. Before I get to that, next slide, we need to identify that this is one of our unique instances where we have what is considered a big box development per the ordinance that was adopted in 2001. A big box retailer is one that exceeds 50,000 square feet. And in doing that, we want to make sure that that, whatever is being built suits the community rather well, allows for if something were to happen to this operator and they were to leave, we would not just be left with this large warehouse-looking building that is poorly suited for any other future operator. So, there are specific expectations and standards related to how it looks to itself, and then how it relates to the other components of the community, including but not limited to the items listed there. It gets into some very specific details on aesthetic qualities that we want to maintain, and how it focuses on maintaining part of the community, and kind of going forward from there. We will kind of talk about that further. As part of this development, we did require a, or a, a traffic impact study was required because the volume of trips generated, or proposed to be generated by this use and its associated secondary operators would generate greater than 100 peak hour trips in either the morning or the afternoon. In this instance, it exceeds it in both circumstances, with 300 trips in the morning to and from, where an in-trip and an out-trip count as two trips, and as opposed to in-and-out is one. And then 700 trips in the afternoon. The traffic study looked at four locations, the intersection of Kentucky 227, which is Stamping Ground Road and Frankfurt Road. which is Stampin' Grun Road and Frankfurt Road, the driveway that serves the Great Crossing School Campus off of Frankfurt Road, and the intersection of Frankfurt Road and McClellan Circle, and the intersection of Finn Castle, Ferguson Lane, and McClellan Circle. At that time, we kind of discussed further. And essentially, the intent of these traffic studies is to see what is the potential build-out going to be? What is that going to do to our existing transportation infrastructure? Is there additional improvements and features that need to be added to our existing networks to allow for greater usability and safer use without negatively or significantly impacting the current operations on the property? So they take up the current conditions, and they say, "This is our future land use code. These are the trips that are associated with this land use code. This is what we would add at full build-out," versus not full build-out, but in the same year. It moves forward and onwards from there. Copies of, or portions of the traffic study are included in the staff packet for those to reference on our commission. At full build-out, it was identified that the traffic across, the location across from the school could necessitate the installation of a traffic signal that would allow for safe transit in and out for both the school users as well as the access to the commercial operations. They also proposed some additional improvements to McClellan Circle and Frankfurt Pike that would allow for safe movement through and throughout the property that I will kind of illustrate here. So these drive areas are the areas where we would expect some improvements to be made as part of this development, starting at the top with the green area that is, that is across from the driveway for Elkhorn Crossing School. At that location, it is proposed that a light would come in. Ultimately, that is a determination of the KYTC Local District Office on when that would come in and how that would work. But at this time, with everything that's been analyzed, it has been deemed appropriate that a light maybe would be situated in that location. Additional improvements to the property, grab this for my personal reference, include dedicated left-turning lanes, right-turning lanes, appropriate stopping areas, and everything like that to allow for proper queuing. The area identified in pink is a proposed entrance onto Frankfurt Road, approximately halfway between the intersection of Frankfurt Pike and McClellan Circle and the intersection with the school. At this location, it is proposed to be a, when you are traveling from west to east, so traveling into the city of Georgetown, a dedicated right-turning lane to enter the property. When traveling from, away from Georgetown, so towards Frankfurt, we would expect a dedicated left-turning lane to allow people to make that turn safely, or as safely as possible, with a median construction to restrict people's ability to make a left turn out of this property onto Frankfurt Pike, thus crossing several lanes of traffic in contradictory areas in a highly sensitive area. There would be two inbound lanes onto the property and one option to make a right out only onto the, from the property. Moving onwards, improvements. Where's the other one? I suppose this one's missing. Can you hit one more, just to see if it's there? I'll just use this one here. So the additional location, well, moving on to McClellan Circle, and unfortunately, this one did not get its box. There is a proposed location identified at the, I'm just going to reach over to everybody here, at this location here, halfway between the intersection of, yep, halfway between the intersection of Frankfurt Pike and the existing intersection with Finn Castle Way. Again, just for everyone's general clarity, and I'm talking about this location right here, where a proposed dedicated right-in-only option would be located at this entrance with a built-up burn to direct people safely into the property before kind of going to the anchor tenant itself. That would also require KYTC approval, and any new entrance cuts require KYTC approval as well as local approvals, because there is a local, interlocal agreement on access onto McClellan Circle and any other portion of the bypass. Let's go back a slide. One more, please. All right, moving to the intersection with Finn Castle, Ferguson Lane, and McClellan View. This is an area where it is proposed that people would have the option to make a right turn in when traveling southbound towards Lexington Road, as well as those exiting the property could make a right turn onto McClellan Circle to then travel southbound. There is no direct left-turn option out of the property. However, there is a proposed R-cut, which is a style of traffic safety mechanism that KYTC seems rather impartial towards, where individuals making, intending to go northbound on the road would make a right turn. You're traveling here, making a right turn onto the road, merging over several lanes and across a period of time into the left turn here before having the option to make a U-turn in the circle here, and then exiting to go northbound towards Frankfurt Pike.
Like we were talking about Monday, similar to what is on the bypass
Yes.
at Frankfurt Lane?
Correct.
In the Kroger area over there?
Correct. That is the proposal at this time. Yes. That they take a little bit of getting used to. I myself find them a little bit weird when I first saw one here, but KYTC seems rather positive about them, and so that is what the proposal is at this location. For those traveling northbound on McClellan Circle towards Frankfurt Pike, there would be a dedicated left-turning lane with a built-up median that would hopefully deter people from making that left turn out of that property. Again, we're trying to reduce these conflict points, especially with those left turns out of a property coming from no movement to full movement on an actively 55 to 45 mile an hour road. Moving onwards, moving away from traffic, please progress. So this is our proposed anchor tenant here. It meets all of our expectations for its setbacks and everything like that. I would like to note that per subdivision regulations, operators within 30,000 square feet and 100,000 square feet must provide one parking space per 250 square feet, which they do provide on the property. The standard is 242. That is the minimum that we would expect, and they are proposing a surplus of parking, which is always a good thing for large tenants. Hopefully, they fill up all that parking lot, and then it's a great day for business for this operator. I would like to also briefly talk about the pedestrian improvements we would expect, in part due to the standing subdivision and development regulations when it comes to roadway construction, as well as the big-box standards. Pedestrian interconnectivity is very essential to these types of operations. We want to make sure their people scale, not primarily focusing on the motoring public that allows for safe movement throughout the property for those choosing not to move their vehicles around if they're visiting various outlots, or just wanting to use it for a quick walk, something like that. While these roads are privately maintained, that access drive would not be a publicly maintained road. We would still require those parking, or those pedestrian improvements as part of this development per those standards that I've described previously. We would want that connection be made safely to the McClellan View Residential Subdivision as well as to any other pedestrian networks throughout this area. I understand that at this point in time, there is no sidewalk along McClellan Circle and Frankfurt Pike, but in this instance, if there was, let's say theoretical if, we would expect them to tie into those. But as there is not one, it's not appropriate to require them tie into nothing. Moving onwards. This is their proposed landscaping for the plan. They are required to do property perimeter landscaping, as well as some VUW perimeter landscaping, interior landscaping, and then satisfy canopy requirement. I am going to step a little bit out of order from the staff report order, and first talk about the vehicle perimeter area landscaping. So any kind of particular use area needs to be screened appropriately from other areas. So there is proposed kind of driveway options for those operator, for those servicing the operator, and so landscaping is required upon those areas, and the applicant does show that appropriately. Furthermore, moving on to, well, I will then speak to their waiver request, or at least the first one of that, which talks about, let me see. So actually, I will move on from that waiver for just a moment. Moving to interior landscape areas, we do require the installation of islands for those VUW areas that exceed 6,000 square feet. At 10% of the total VUW, and for those areas to be populated with a tree every 250 square feet of interior landscaped area, with the construction of 300,000 square feet of particular use area, either through the access easement. Please go back. With, in addition to the access easement area, we would anticipate that at least 30,000 square feet of interior landscaped area be installed, and 121 interior landscaping trees be also provided on the property as part of this development, which the applicant does show at this time. Again, we will be checking to make sure that that standard is maintained, and there's been no variances requested for this, so we would expect them to meet the letter of the ordinance on this one. Speaking very briefly on the maximum, minimum canopy requirements, the anchor lot is proposed to be redeveloped in its entirety, and so, per the standards for properties without any retained trees, new development, post-development must have at least 24% of the area, or 24% of tree canopy pre-required on the property equivalent to 126,000 square feet of canopy. They propose the planting of the large trees as part of their interior landscaped area, as well as their vehicle perimeter landscaped areas. And at the standards that we set forth, which is one large tree is equivalent to 750 square feet of mature tree canopy, they would need to provide additional landscaping to meet those requirements. On the landscaping plan right now, they use a different metric from a different community that will need to be adjusted to our community standards. Moving to our waiver requests. In this instance, actually, please go in the forward direction. Keep going. Keep going. There. So, per our ordinance requirements, you are, there's two property perimeter landscaping requirements at this time that would be necessitated. The first of which is the property perimeter landscaping against, or between properties that are not being accessed by a arterial road and the user itself. So along the roadway of McClellan Circle and Frankfurt Pike, we would expect the installation of trees in accordance with that standard, and they are requesting a waiver to essentially defer that installation of trees to whomever comes in and develops those outlots. That would allow for them to kind of choose the trees that are more appropriate to their preferences and kind of meet their expectations and standards. Ultimately, staff finds that that is an appropriate request and recommends approval of that waiver. Again, that would be just deferring it to the future person so that Outlet Owner A would come in and do their landscaping that would be required, and then Outlet Owner B, and so on and so forth.
Let me ask you a real quick question here.
Yes.
Along that same line, but those outlots are going to be facing the parking lot and the development, aren't they? Or will they be facing Frankfurt Pike and McClellan Circle?
They will be between the anchor lot location and the road itself. So the outlots...
Which way will they be facing?
I mean, I'm sorry. They will be in this area here, so regardless of where the building faces, where the entrance is, this still, this landscape buffer along this area is still required. So if you access it here, which they, I believe they are proposing them using the internal access drive, they still have to buffer the areas that are not accessing those properties. This is, in this instance, considered a double frontage lot, and therefore must provide property perimeter landscaping for those instances.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, those buildings in that area, the back of the building's going to be facing Frankfurt Pike anyway, isn't it?
Potentially. Depends on the layout of the operator. Regardless of the layout, we would still require...
They're not going to have access to Frankfurt Pike or McClellan Circle.
Correct.
So I would think that they don't have access there. They have access to this street on the inside, they're going to face that direction.
Yes.
If the back of the building is going to be facing Frankfurt Pike or McClellan Circle, why not go ahead and put the trees in?
I mean, that could, yeah.
What difference would, would it make? You know, somebody's going to put a building or a restaurant in there, it's going to be to their back. I don't know that they really care what kind of trees back there.
Would the ultimate construction interfere with trees if they're put in first?
I don't know. I mean, if that's, if that's the purpose... Yeah, if, if that's the purpose, then fine, let's delay it. But to say that they're delaying it so that the new owners would have a say in what type of tree goes in there, I think that's...
If you look like Hamburg, though, that whole front row on Man of War, all the restaurants are facing towards Man of War, you can't get into them, Man of War. You have to go around and go in the back.
Well, that's true, too. Yeah. Thank you. Never mind, keep going.
Okay, very good. Our second, our second request from them is a waiver to the property perimeter landscaping adjoining agricultural areas. A recently passed ordinance requires both the installation of a six-foot-tall no-climb fence or equivalent-style fence, as well as a tree canopy, or not tree canopy, tree buffer 35 feet from property boundary be installed on this area. The applicant is requesting a waiver to this one, and this area is listed as proposed development area, so it's uncertain exactly what would be there, what their timeline would be. So staff does recommend a waiver to this requirement as well, given that essentially the same justification is found for the not-accessing arterial landscaping buffer along Frankfurt and McClellan, and then it would be the similar instance in this one. I believe at workshop, we did have a discussion on should that waiver maybe not be granted? And obviously, that's at your guys' discretion, we can discuss further. But at the time of everything coming in, the staff recommendation was and still is to allow for them to, or would recommend in favor of that waiver being granted. With that, that is everything I really have in terms of this. Staff ultimately recommends approval of the preliminary development plan, subject to the approval of the two waivers, the property perimeter landscaping across both roads, and 13 conditions. I would like to identify that we did add after discussion on the seven, that an additional condition be added, can we progress one more? That all roadway improvements and utility infrastructure be completed prior to the start of building construction on the property. We do not want someone coming in on a road that is, or on our road. We would like the operation to be kind of operating in conjunction with one another so we're not putting people into harm's way, or kind of making a weird situation of a gravel road grocery store. So that is our recommendation for that one there. That is an additional one that is reflected on the conditions of approval, not reflected in the staff report, but reflective of the workshop meeting that we had on Monday. With that, I have nothing else. And if there are any questions, if he, now is the time before we bring up the applicant.
All roadway improvements shall be completed prior to start of the building construction. I can see laying down first layer of blacktop, you know, prior to building construction, but to say that all roadway improvements, I mean, they're just going to get torn up.
And it limits the time, so you've got to crew, you've got to wait on this crew to get done with that before you start building, as opposed to maybe doing, stretch it even longer. I would, that would be my concern.
Yeah, I can see the utility infrastructure. That needs to be in place, for sure. But the roads, I don't, I don't know about that. We'll hear from the developer, the engineer.
And it may be appropriate to amend that language further to say improvements to McClellan Circle and Frankfurt Pike be put in before that comes in?
Yeah.
Or something along those lines.
Yeah.
Of course, we can speak with the applicant about that one and how we kind of all...
Right.
These are meant to be discussions, so we can, we bring them up for discussion unless there's anything else for me.
Let's hear from the engineer or the consultant here, and then we'll take any questions from...
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, Derek.
I'm Derek Triplet with Land Design and Development. We're a civil engineering and land use planning firm out of Louisville. Soon as we get the PowerPoint going, we'll kind of hit the ground running here. It's my first time in front of the commission here, happy to be here, appreciate you guys having us. So, Elise did a great job presenting this project, very thorough. I'll try not to be overly redundant with the points she made. We're referring to this property as a marketplace on Frankfurt Pike, and I'm here representing the developer in this case, Hogan Property Development Co. There we go, back one. This is the existing zoning map. The point here is just to state that this is zoned appropriately for this proposed use. We're not seeking a zone change, as several of the projects before us on the agenda were. So this is zoned appropriately for what we're proposing on this property. Just to set the context a little bit, I think everyone here is probably familiar with the property, but just some contextual slides here. So with this slide, you're heading west on Frankfurt Pike. So, uh, with this slide, you're heading west on Frankfort Pike with the site on your left-hand side. This is taken within that intersection of McClellan Circle and Frankfort Pike. Uh, heading down Frankfort Pike, you'd be heading towards the school. This is heading northbound on McClellan Circle towards that same intersection with the site located on the left. Uh, last contextual slide here, this just shows where this sits in, in the world. Uh, it's got our rendering superimposed on, uh, an aerial image here just to again, uh, relay where this sits within the context of the community. This is our proposed rendering of the development. Uh, the red that we're showing along the frontage are the future out parcels that, that have been discussed up to this point. Um, the pale green that we have is what we're referring to as potential future development area. Uh, the total property is fifty acres. What we're proposing here is development of twelve of those acres. Um, as Elise mentioned, we have filed a preliminary subdivision plat that reflects the boundaries that are seen here within this rendering. Uh, that's not on today's agenda. Uh, we wanted to make sure we were okay from a development plan standpoint, uh, before going down that road, but that will be in front of this commission next month. Go back. Okay, so, uh, to further discuss the landscape waiver, and so essentially what we're requesting at this point is to defer the required landscaping that would be in place on the future out par, out parcel sections as well as the future development, uh, tract for several reasons. Uh, number one, especially on the out parcels, if you were to install those plants, they, at this point, they would get destroyed at the time of construction of those out parcels. Um, as far as where those buildings would be oriented, I think it'd be very likely they'd be oriented towards the outside of the property, towards the main roads. These, these businesses really rely on signage and identification. Uh, and so I think would be more appropriate for the landscaping to be installed and fully complied with when we start bringing users online, uh, within those future out parcel areas. Uh, the other waiver for the landscaping we're required, uh, we're requesting is on the western property line adjacent to the agricultural property. Uh, there's planting requirements as well as the fence requirement. Um, we have actually provided a double row of deciduous, uh, it could be a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees along the backside of this development. I've got a slide that zooms in on that a little bit more. Uh, that seems to be a more appropriate place from a screening standpoint to screen the backside and, and the, the loading areas for, uh, this retail site to provide that screening away from that agricultural property. Um, and then as far as the fence is concerned, there, there is an existing fence along that property line and also mature trees. We would prefer to not tear those things down in order to, to, to build that fence, uh, but certainly should development be proposed on the future potential development area, uh, that would be fully complied with at that point. But we don't, we don't see the justification in tearing down those existing trees and fences in that location, uh, just to put up a new fence. And so this is the preliminary subdivision plan that, uh, I just mentioned that will be in front of you all next month. This is just subdividing the different areas on the property, um, defining what we're calling the anchor lot, which is the twelve acres that this grocery store will take place on, um, and, and also defining the out parcels that, uh, in the future would be at, would be subdivided into several different users. Um, typical users you would see in front of a big box development like this. Um, and then also defining that residual tract at the back. Uh, there are large portions of that residual tract that we're referring to as future development, um, that are undevelopable just based on stream, floodplain, there's a major gas line running through there and just general topographic challenges. So that entire area is not really subject to development, but there is some potential for some type of development on portions of that property in the future. Um, I mentioned the property along the western property line, um, and the condition over there, this is just highlighting that condition, showing the existing fence line as well as the mature trees that exist along that property line that we would prefer stay intact at this point in time. Um, mentioned the enhanced landscaping along the backside of our proposed retail and grocery store. Uh, this is the double row of plantings that I've referred to there, again, just to establish a substantial visual screen, um, from the back of house operation here. Just some general building renderings that have been put together. This, this is a, a large regional grocery store chain and so they have an established aesthetic and a stat, established quality of architectural features and so that is carried throughout their different facilities, uh, within this region. And so thi, this is a continuation of what they've had success with in the past. I know everybody's curious what it is, I can't tell you.
Start with a B or C.
Those two guys in the suits would, would have my head.
Just look, keep looking at the pictures.
So, and this, this, these are the side and, and rears of this, the, the bottom one being the rear, that's the view that would be screened the most by those enhanced landscaping. And then this is, uh, additional building facades of the seven thousand square foot retail user, um, on all four sides. It's continuing that same aesthetic that's being established within the grocery user. Whoops. And with that, that really concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all have.
What about the construct, road construction, uh, under construction?
Yeah, I, I think, and I'd be curious if, if the Hogan team has, has a different opinion. I think it would be more appropriate to tie that to the certificate of occupancy of the building as opposed to the start of construction. What, what you wanna avoid is, like you mentioned, tearing up those improvements to get made, but also remobilizing construction crews. It just doesn't make sense logistically. So really, I think all of the work should be done at the same time and then the certificate of occupancy should be the element that's held up until those improvements are made, in my opinion.
Do you look for the, uh, major store to be completed first before the outbuilding, uh, outlots, buildings or? I, I can see what Elise was talking about. You don't want, if some of the outbuildings were already constructed, you don't want people driving in on gravel driveway to come in there.
I, I would expect for this grocery user to be the first thing built on this site. There's a lot of conversations going along, going on with potential users on the out parcels, but nothing set in stone at this point. Um, so right now, this is, this is the proposal we have in front of you.
If you built it, they would kinda like.
That, that's the goal and to that point, exactly. I think once we get this thing built or, or at, at the very least approved, uh, get a lot more interest as far as users on those out parcels.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah, sure.
We will now take, uh, any questions or comments from, yes ma'am? And please, when you come up here, state your name.
Hi, my name is Lisa Manning and I live at one thirty-three Ferguson Lane. I am the president of the HOA for McClellan View. I'm here representing about thirty people in the room that are part of that neighborhood. Is it possible to go to the aerial slide that, what's up? Is it possible to go to the aerial slide? Okay. So while she's getting that, I would like to say, um, I don't know where y'all live, but if you've ever been to Kroger and you see the amount of traffic goes in and out of the Kroger subdivision, uh, or the Kroger parking lot, it's a lot of traffic. I'd be curious to see what the traffic study is for Kroger because I guarantee it's more than seven hundred people at a Friday night, I thought, or nighttime at five o'clock. So I'd be curious to see, number one, what that traffic study would be, but number two, um, the reason that I'm, we're concerned about this is our neighborhood has forty-four homes in it. When you pull into Finn Castle Way, you can turn left and you go to our neighborhood and it ends in a cul-de-sac, so there's only one way in and one way out. When you turn right, there's a church on the right-hand side. So what they're proposing is to put a side street on that church. So now where we have forty-four homes going into this little tiny road, we're now gonna have hundreds of people accessing that road. I'm not really sure why we need to put it there in our neighborhood as opposed to a little further up Frankfort Pike, or, or on Frankfort Pike or a little bit further up McClellan Circle. Um, if you look, here's our neighborhood right here.
Can you give her, uh, the pointer up there?
Here's our neighborhood right here. I live right there. Uh, here's our neighborhood and then this is the little tiny road. There is a brand-new development being built here, so we're gonna have traffic coming in from this development right here. Then you're gonna have another traffic stop here to get in and out of this neighborhood. I'm not sure why they can't just move this over here, just leave this entrance that they have here, this entrance here. I'm not sure why they would need another entrance that actually comes through our neighborhood. I'm pretty sure that if you guys lived in that neighborhood, you wouldn't want. We have kids, we have walkers, we have bikes, we have all the things that are coming through that neighborhood and you probably wouldn't want seven hundred extra cars coming through your neighborhood at five o'clock at night. That's all I'm saying. Um, I, um, before you guys would approve that, I would love it if you would just take a drive over there and just look at that spot just to see because I just don't think it's feasible for us. It's very difficult to get in and out of that as a left-hand turn anyway. Now we have a whole bunch more traffic coming in. You're gonna have a stop at that first neighborhood here. You're gonna have another stop here, you're gonna have a stop here and then, so you're gonna have three stops, boom, 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 and I think that's really gonna make traffic a nightmare. Uh, that's our biggest concern. Um, you know, you're just a lot more traffic, a lot more noise. Um, what measures are gonna be used to mitigate that noise, the air pollution, the light pollution from that, um, whole area? What are the long-term plans, um, as far as, you know, I've been to different grocery stores. I've heard rumors, you guys don't have to answer this, I've heard rumors it's a Publix. I adore Publix. Speaking of chicken, they have the best chicken ever. Um, and it's a great, great building. I just don't think they need to put the entrance in the front of our neighborhood. So, uh, and I'll read you something that one of the other neighbors sent. My name is Tammy Hauck. I live at one forty-four Ferguson Lane. I received a letter about the meeting tonight, I'm unable to attend. I am horrified, horrified that a commercial retail establishment would be able to share a neighborhood's interests. The thing that comes to mind is zoning. Although I'm a layperson on the subject, it seems that the neighborhood ingress egress should be zoned as residential. I question whether the church should be sharing the entrance, but, and would argue that it should have its own private drive. However, the church's sharing is not a nuisance. Having a neighborhood entrance with the back of a large, share of the back of a large commercial retail establishment is not only a nuisance, but also affects our property values. Semis coming in and going to make deliveries is not something anyone wants for their neighborhood. Additionally, it's a danger to the children who might venture into the green space area that we have right up front to play. Um, also if there is a, oh, I saw that. Uh, it seems the developer should build a barrier of some sort to block off the retail area and avoid access from our neighborhood. Um, and I think that's it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I'm Jerry Bergen-Hagan. I live in McClellan View at one forty-five Ferguson Lane. I'm pleased to see another grocery store come in to compete with Kroger's and Walmart. We have far too many, or far too few grocery stores here. But my objection is also to this entrance onto Finn Castle Way. Finn Castle Way is from the thirty-yard line to the gold line. We have a church entrance that comes into it, we have Ferguson Lane that comes into it and you're gonna put another entrance into it. It makes absolutely no sense. If you are forced to put an entrance there, I suggest it be the same as you put in at Scott County High School that only allows a turn left out or a right turn in. Okay? None of these loop-de-loop things that showed in her slide with the yellow, um, zoning where there are elaborate turnarounds. It just doesn't make sense. The Gaines Farm backs up to the south side of most of our property. It recently sold, sold to Ball Homes. Ball Homes put a stub street in our neighborhood called Leo the Way. If they develop that area and connect that street up, we will be having traffic coming out of that subdivision going down Ferguson Lane onto Finn Castle. We'll have traffic coming out of the church. We'll have traffic coming out of this, um, development. It's gonna be an absolute nightmare on Finn Castle Way. It makes absolutely no sense. It seems to me that, ma'am, are you pointing?
Like Lisa said, to put in an entrance in this area here somewhere on McClellan Circle makes much more sense. And if you wanna do that one, one way in and one way out, that's fine with me. Now, whether you wanna build an elaborate, um, intersection there with the turnarounds and all that, that's up to you folks. But putting it into Finn Castle Way is absolutely bad news. Thank you.
Hey Jerry, while you've still got the marker, uh, up there in your old subdivision, is that little stub out down at the bottom, is that where you're talking about up, down, right?
Yes, right there. And Ball Homes, there's, there's a zoning change coming up for Ball Homes for ninety-nine acres. That Gaines Farm was a hundred and sixty-seven acres. Eventually, they only put a sub-street in for one reason, eventually to develop that area. Now, there's a, from back here, these are tree lines, tree lines, okay? My home is approximately right in this area here, but if Ball develops this from Payne's Depot Road in this direction, they're gonna connect to that substrate.
Yeah. Really, that's.
So it's, it's more traffic to come down Ferguson Lane to dump on Finn Castle Way. And remember, thirty-yard line to the gold line, that's all the longer that street is. Any questions?
I'd like to hear from the developer in terms of why that was chosen and what options there are.
Does, does the Kentucky Department of Transportation, do they dictate entrances and exits?
I mean, for entrances and exits off of McClellan Circle, not only is it KYTC, it's also, uh, local offices as well, so Scott County Fiscal and, uh, City Council. There was an agreement or some type of legislative ordinance that, um, resulted in any new entrances and cuts in needing to be approved by them first and, or in addition to KYTC.
I forgot to mention one other thing too.
Yeah, Jerry.
From the church property to McClellan Circle, there's a pump house, regardless of complete sewer system down in that area.
Yeah, it's down in that little corner right there.
Yes. And I don't know how close that road's gonna have to come to that. There's also a wet area like a creek down there. If we would get a heavy rain, they gonna build a bridge over that thing or are they gonna put a, a tube in that the water can flow through? Put too small a tube in, the area floods and it floods our pump house.
What did you say Lisa about the, can you repeat your answer to my question? I'm sorry.
Um, regarding entrance?
Yes, it was actually the answer to Charlie's question.
Um, so new entrances off of, off of McClellan Circle need to be approved by KYTC in addition to local government op, agencies and offices.
So, can KYTC deny also?
Yeah, I mean.
So, so if, if we were to request, if the developer was to request it, to move it on up there, Transportation Department could say, no, it's too close to the intersection.
Yeah.
Uh, move it back down.
Correct. Yeah, they could say too close.
So understand, we, we may try to do what you're asking, Jerry, but get turned down by the state. But, yeah.
I just think you guys really need to go there and look at it. It, it's not, it's literally from the end of that desk to there.
Yeah, yeah. I'm very familiar with it there.
I have a question.
Yeah, come, come up here to the, tell us, tell us your name. Oh, shame on you.
Tell the truth.
Your name, please.
Linda Spradling.
Thank you.
Okay, if this goes the way it's proposed, when I come out of my subdivision, I can no longer turn north or west, whatever. I have to go that way, go down and turn around and come back to go that way. The subdivision that's got the streets in and everything across the highway there, when the state says, yeah, we can put this turnaround out here, it needs to be coordinated with that other subdivision before it's approved because they're gonna have to get in and out. I don't know where the turnaround will be, maybe it'll take us all the way down. I don't know where the turnaround will be, maybe it'll take us all the way down to just below Payne's Depot, that, that turnaround that's there now. They may not even put a new one for us. They may say, drive all the way down there and turn around. I don't know. I don't know how the state does this.
Yeah, I, I don't think it would be that far down to Payne's Depot.
Well, but it should be coordinated.
Sure.
The state should know what's already happening across the street.
Yeah.
Before they make a decision.
Couldn't disagree with you one bit.
A point to her, think about that new subdivision. They have put in a left-turn lane going south off of McClellan Circle into that new subdivision. But if you were to take that, it's like going to a traffic light on a four-lane highway and trying to make a U-turn. You don't have the big turning circle on the other side of the road, and I don't think there's enough room to build one on that other side so you can make the circle. So...
Okay, well, I assume to, to look into it.
Uh, just, first of all, totally understand where everyone's coming from on this. Uh, traffic is always a major topic of conversation with developments like this. Um, just to sort of set the stage, as far as the due diligence we've gone through, we've had extensive coordination with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, as well as local offices, uh, regarding this traffic plan. Um, they set the scope for the traffic study. Traffic study has been submitted to them, um, and the traffic study recommends these various improvements that we're making, whether it's left-turn lanes into the site, right-turn lanes into the site, the traffic light, et cetera. As far as McClellan Circle is concerned, that is what's referred to as a controlled-access highway. And so, when McClellan was built, they defined where those access points would take place. They do not really hand out new median breaks for full access into this site. Our preference would absolutely have a full median break right in front of the, the property, that'd be the grocery store's preference, it'd be the developer's preference, uh, but the best we can do as far as directly on our frontage is that right-in-only heading, heading south on McClellan. As far as the impacts to the, the folks on Ferguson Lane, um, we will be coming off of Finn Castle Way and then taking a right into this subdivision. We, and then the new church access will actually come off of the road that we're building, the, the private road for our site, so it will not be an additional element of confusion to that intersection down there. It'll be further back into our site, and their access will come from that point. Um, I think it was the president of the HOA that mentioned how dangerous that left-turn is coming out of, of Ferguson, uh, heading left north on McClellan. Uh, well, the state agrees, and, and that's why they're, uh, placing this requirement for this R-cut, i- is, is what they call. Um, and if I could get to a slide that could show the bulb for that, it, so there is some geometry, it's, it's, it's hard to see, but it is down there on the screen. Can I borrow your pointer, please? Thank you.
You can go to the one that had the blue and the yellow on the screen.
Yeah, 'cause that shows.
Yeah, that, that was on, on ours, yeah. But that, that is here, and we'll get a better image fr, from Stat's presentation, but that, that's here, and what we actually shhh.
And we go to New Orleans.
I thought that's what the new publicist was gonna say.
Here we go.
Uh, so, yeah, in, in blue is the radius bulb that would be placed to allow that movement, uh, for that turn there, and that actually accommodates a semi-truck. We have to make sure that the highest and most difficult maneuver could take place there, passenger vehicles would not have.
Is that being built in front of that subdivision across the street, or the current entrance into that subdivision?
No. The new subdivision is about 500 feet south on McClellan from this point. And when we submit the, these types of items to the state, uh, whether it's our road improvement plans, or the traffic study, they review all those elements collectively with all of the knowledge they have for existing projects, ongoing projects with on that state road. So, they absolutely considered that new subdivision that's currently under construction, uh, when they were recommending these road improvements. And so, th, this is our reaction to, to the input and what the requirements that they're placing on us. I know it's kind of a, a unique maneuver and, and geometry, but I do think that, once people get used to it, and there is a little bit of a learning curve, I, I know that there's a similar situation elsewhere in town, uh, but I do think it's a safer maneuver, uh, ultimately, and I think your HOA president, uh, again, referred to how dangerous that left-turn is at that location, and so, um...
I have no problems making that, but would you want semi-trucks going in and out of the entrance of your neighborhood, day and night? Because they do, they come in at night, because they deliver. I work for a company that has semi-trucks, they're in and out all the time. So I know that. That's not something you would want at the entrance of your neighborhood.
So, we don't know for a fact that this is where the semi-trucks are gonna come from. We, we are justifying, excuse me, uh, we are justifying a traffic light up there across from the school. I would think that that's a more appropriate location for that. Uh, and also, these, these are public roads, and so, the public is, is, is able to use those, and I think right now Ferguson Lane is at that end road, so as far as additional traffic coming from this into your subdivision, I, I don't know that that's a fully-founded complaint. I think we share about 200 feet of, of shared roadway from that section of Finn Castle, uh, to McClellan.
Can you go back to the aerial side? There's, it looks like there's another entrance planned on McClellan Circle. Why can't that?
There is, that's, that's a right-in-only.
Hey Derek, before you change there, uh, you said the entrance into the church is changing, but can you point that out?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll get to yours, Lisa.
This is, this is where the new entrance to the church is gonna take place. Right now, the church entrance comes down here, and just dives in, we're just moving it into our site and coming off of our access drive.
Are you gonna close off that road that's currently the church entrance?
That, that would be removed and essentially rebuilt. This, this will be a, a three-way intersection here, and then, yes, all of this will end up being green space, and then that new roadway be created as shown.
Before you leave this chart, your comment about 500 feet, I wouldn't say that's true. First off, right where you're showing that circle is that, I don't know why the drawing doesn't show that neighborhood that is across the street and where there are entrances. I'd say it's right there where that circle is right now. And if it isn't, if it is, say, 500 feet or whatever, that means you're gonna have that entrance, a circle, and another entrance, and then we're boom, 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 all right in a row on a major 55 mile per hour of road. So, I don't know if that's a smart move either.
But I, I have to agree with Derek. I think this type of thing is, is safer than people trying to make a left-turn out of that.
Oh, I agree with that.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, by having three different opportunities through there in a row, is still making it awful clumsy through there in a very high-speed area. But there is, like I say, if this drawing showed other neighborhoods and where that entrance is coming out, you could see that clearly where the bam, bam, bam.
If you look at Google Maps, you can definitely tell that that bulb would be before the left-turn lane going into that new development.
And they're right lined up bam, 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 right in a row.
It's pretty close, but it is definitely, it would look like it would bulb out kinda where the end of that other street is across the road, you know, where there's just...
Well, so you're gonna have a bulb, and then a left entrance into that neighborhood, all right there?
It loo, it looks like it would be pretty, that, that left-turn lane would be right past that bulb. I don't know how far the state would do that, it would be...
And, and if I may, just to add a little bit of, of additional information, w, we're aware of the, of that new subdivision being put in, and it caught our attention because we had the same question you did, as, as far as these different access points. And so, we, we did approach the state as far as, okay, can we not do this R-cut and actually utilize the existing left-turn into that new subdivision to serve that same purpose? And, and at this point, the response is, they don't want to encourage the, the U-turn movement within the apron of that subdivision entrance. And so, they, they want a specifically dedicated break in the median and, and defined R-cut to serve this purpose, to get people heading, uh, leaving Ferguson, to provide them the ability to head north on McClellan.
So it's a lot like what they built down there by Bradford Place.
Yes.
You have to turn in into Bradford Place, but coming out of Bradford Place to go south, you have to go there, nor, or go south to go, go down and turn around the other road.
Yes, yes, sir.
Well, I have a question about all this. So, you talked about there was a some type of agreement locally, where the local government has some say, do they have some say with the state of Kentucky, what these final rules are, or is it the state says, you know, it's our way or there's no way? Is that what you're saying?
The, the state has the final decision.
So, there's never been a case where the local community's been able to overrule the state of Kentucky this kind of thing?
Not in my experience. I, I may defer to staff, maybe they've had other, uh, but, but no, uh, n, not as far as I'm aware, the state controls those rules.
It's not an overruling, but there's been some persuasion from time to time, but no, no, we cannot overrule them on a state highway.
But what is this agreement that you all talked about?
There was some sort of agreement when the bypass was first laid out, that, uh, cuts would not be less than 1,200 feet, and they, they lined out where they were gonna be, and local governments and the state signed off on it. I can't tell you anymore about how that has worked since, except they haven't really added much since, uh, other than turnarounds and, you know, some, some fine tuning perhaps. I, I'm not so sure that the locals really have a say.
They don't.
I mean, recommendations like we can always have, but, I mean, DOT is the one that makes all the road decisions. I mean, they've got all the experts, I mean, they, they make those decisions. We, we cannot overrule that.
Where was the traffic study from? And where did you get the number of 700 in the evening? Because there's not a grocery store around here that has 700, only 700 people. We have 36,000 people in this, in this amount.
Well, a, as far as where it was done, I'm looking for the staff report that lays that out. There was various intersections that were studied. Driveway across from Elkhorn Crossing School and Frankfurt Road, Finn Castle Way and McClellan Circle, McClellan Circle and Frankfurt Pike intersections. Uh, as far as the trip generation numbers, those are generated by what's called the ITE manual. It's, it's a traffic engineer's handbook, essentially, that identifies every use you could think of under the sun, and it applies a trip generation based on whatever that factor may be, uh, size, square footage of, of the facility, if it's residential, it's about units, and so it's a science, and, and that's where those numbers come from. And this is submitted and reviewed by local agencies as well as the state. And the, the individual that did this is, her name's Diane Zimmerman, she's probably the most experienced traffic engineer in the state, um, and, and so I think her work is very well-founded.
But Lisa, to answer your question, it lists all of the places that she looked at, uh, but they didn't count any of them at Kroger. Uh, they were, they were counting in this area right here, uh, instead of at, at Kroger or Walmart, uh, and that's, to back up what you're saying, that's what needs to be looked at.
It's crazy, it's dinner time trying to get in and out of sections. So, you can't tell me that 700, let's just say that that's average, we're only going to get 700 people to come through that area. That's a lot of traffic at 5:00 p.m. when we're trying to get in and out of the area.
Um, and so, as far as what's studied, um, they studied the areas of impact for this. The, the whole purpose of the traffic study is to identify the impact that this development and the trips generated from this development will have on these key intersections. And as far as comparing this to the Krogers, this is about a third of the size as the Kroger is. This is a neighborhood grocery. It, it's, it's a much smaller operation.
Then we need to update all the, see, it's smaller, it's a smaller version, so it's still pretty busy.
And it's got one way in and one way out. And why does this one need four?
No, there's two ways in and out.
Hold on, hold on, everybody, let's, uh...
Come to the microphone, one day.
Thank you, Derek. Uh, one of these two gentlemen right here have been waiting to get up here.
Good evening. Bob Gound, uh, 113 Ferguson Lane. What was your name again? I'm sorry. Bob Gound, G is George, O-U-N-D. And like everybody else, my concern is ingress and egress. Um, when you look at it, and it doesn't show the bulb here, but there's one reason, and one reason only typically, that a big-box retailer will put a bulb in for a semi-truck, as was mentioned by the developer, or the developer's representative. The semi-trucks are gonna be coming through, turning left off of that access road onto Finn Castle Way, and we're talking a typical trailer is 58, or 48 to 52 feet long. So, it's not gonna have the proper width. I know the DOT will make sure there's a lot there, but then they're gonna have to turn right to turn left in that bulb, which is what that bulb is designed for. So now, we're gonna be having people, semi-trailers, turning right off there to make a U-turn on McClellan Circle.
Doesn't Bradford Place the one we're talking about? Don't they have a bulb on theirs?
Yeah.
They have a bulb. So I assume the bulb has to be, no matter whether it's a business or not.
Well, the, the better solution would be for a retailer, a big-box retailer, to have that turnaround on their property, which is approximately 90, a 90-foot circle, basically, for a semi-trailer of Kroger, a Publix, a Walmart, to turn around. And a majority of them have them on their property, but now we're having it forced upon us in McClellan View. So they're gonna be at, using that access road for semi-trailers and be turning right. We're gonna have to have our children that are learning to drive competing with semi-trailers and all of the other traffic, not to mention the traffic in the AM, and I don't remember the exact number of traffic in the AM, as our children are gonna be trying to navigate their way to high school.
I will say, having driven a semi-truck several times, they are gonna wanna go up the other way and take a right turn.
Gonna want to.
And hit that left-hand light.
On that, on that light, I agree.
Being a semi, I'm telling you, they're not gonna wanna do that. I'm not saying they won't, because I've seen them in stupidest places ever.
And like you, and like you, I have navigated a semi-truck myself over the years. And so, why it, why is there a requirement for the McClellan View ingress and egress, along with the bulb, that's there for really one purpose only, those of us that have previously driven semi-trucks?
And I wouldn't wanna know that, too, is that a...
And they're gonna be trying to turn those things around without any form of light on that end of the traffic pattern, if you will. And then, we already have proposed an ingress, a right turn only, why can that not be studied and used in regards to an ingress and egress to get back out on McClellan View?
Well, I think that's what he said, that's what they requested, and they wouldn't let them do that.
Is that what you requested? Is that, is... I would love to see that. I would love to see that.
You'd rather have...
And I think the rest of our folks would love to see that, to live down on McClellan.
Sir, sir, please, we've got somebody speaking.
And you can see up there, they already got that right-hand turn ingress. I don't know, it's, and, and coming from a business perspective, what you guys are representing, and I totally agree with it, it's a heck of a lot cheaper to come in and on a already-built road than it is to build your own access, and it costs you a lot more. Costs you a lot more. And not only that, I, hey, whoever the big box is going in there, I love it. Like others, I love the competition. I do.
We just want it done right the first time.
Yes. But I don't wanna put our children at risk for more accidents, and I don't know if there's been an accident study on that, uh, entrance that's just like this one that they're proposing, um, down closer to Kroger, and what the accident rate is based off that.
We can ask the police department about that, they wouldn't, wouldn't know.
And, and I would challenge y'all to do that.
Okay.
Because it's our safety and our children's safety that's putting it, being put at risk. Nothing to do with a great retailer. Love all retailers.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So, please, please do that, and please do your due diligence.
Yes, sir. The gentleman right behind you is waiting to get up here. Thank you.
It's okay. As long as we don't hunt the bullies of TV, it's okay.
Uh, my name's Chris Dooley. I'm from 141 Ferguson Lane in Georgetown. Uh, just a, a concerned neighbor of this, but also in my professional life. I am a director of pre-construction and development for a Fortune 500 company here in this area. I develop properties all over North America. In looking at this plan, I did have some of the same concerns slash questions as, first off, I did wanna say that after doing some quick research today, uh, Finn Castle Way is not a dedicated city, county, state, or private street. It is a non-dedicated street.
And is it what?
Non-dedicated, excuse me, non-dedicated street.
So if it's non-dedicated, it has to be private then, doesn't it?
Who's paying the payment?
So we could try to make it a gated community and put a gate on, on Circle.
According to the, what's on the Planning Commission's website. So my quest, my question is...
It is?
Since we're already proposing a right-in... Since we're already proposing a right-in at this location coming off of McClellan Circle, there is the current D cell lane that goes into Finn Castle Way, which is a concern, because if you're turning into that, you want to check behind you because it's a 55 mile an hour zone. I'm assuming they're going to have to build some sort of a D cell lane for that. If that is the case, wouldn't it make more sense to have a simple right-out here? Because that accomplishes everything that all this does with a simple right-out. And talking to the gentleman in the suits, as I develop stuff all over the country, you can't develop this just due to grade change there, the wet lines and everything else. It's at least half an million dollars in savings. So it's, it's a simple fix if we can still get that right-out, because I understand the need for, for the changes here and the changes there. But what this does is it keeps this traffic out of our neighborhood.
Traffic is of interest.
Thank you, Chris. What they're saying is the state, that's...
Well, I don't think he said that you can't have a right-out. He said that they're going for a right-in right there. You're still going to have the same amount of traffic. It's simply moving it from here to, from here to here.
For the right-out.
Yeah, it's the same.
But then, but then the, how do you turn left?
Well, you still have the same opportunity here. And it gives you more...
Oh, okay, I got you, I got you. Go ahead and turn right there and come down here.
Correct.
Gotcha.
You have the ability to turn right out of here. There's going to have to be a D cell lane for coming into Finn Castle.
Yeah.
But that gives you more opportunity to get into that left lane to make that turn than it does coming out of here, going from zero to 55 and then back to zero.
Yeah. That's, sounds logical, Chris. Thank you.
First time I've been called logical all day.
This gentleman back here in the back's been wanting to speak or something.
Exactly what he said.
Oh, okay.
I'm in purple, I was wanting to know why we weren't really mentioning purple.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am, Lisa?
One of the things we haven't talked about...
Can you come back up here, please?
One of the things we haven't talked about is what, how it's going to affect the two, the houses that sit right there. I mean, you're looking at the houses now, they, they do get the traffic from our neighborhood, but now when you come in, there's a house, there's a little bit of a green space and a house, but immediately when you come in, there's a house right across from that. So that house and the house next to it, all those houses are going to hear that traffic all the time. Most grocery stores are open 7:00 o'clock in the morning until 11, 10, 11 o'clock at night. So they're now going to hear that traffic coming in all hours of the night. So that's another consideration is for the actual people who live in those homes.
I have only one last thing to say.
Up here, Jerry. Stand up, please.
State Transportation Department is not God. So if we cannot influence them to make the changes, then we're in bad shape. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well said.
All right. We have, I will honestly appreciate all of your input, really do, both sides.
So, Jim?
Could you speak to the recommended solution that Mr., I don't remember your name?
Chris.
Chris Dooley. Yeah, absolutely. I'll speak to that and a couple other comments that were made. As far as providing the ability for trucks to turn around on-site, we do have that. I don't know if we can get to a slot of the site plan, but behind the proposed grocery store and directly behind the, the retail shop, we have enough area for a semi truck can do donuts in there. As far as maneuvering and the geometry of, of the designed roadways and their ability to accommodate semi trailers, we look at worst-case scenario all the time. So we've made sure a semi truck can traverse this side and have access to, to every curb cut and every access point that we've defined on this property. As far as the D cell lane heading into Finn Castle, we have the D cell lane and the dedicated right turn lane just further north. Anything otherwise would be redundant. As far as the idea for a, the right turn out as well as the, to accommodate the right turn in, it's currently designed sort of mid-block onto this. You know, I, I think at initial thought is that, yeah, that, that is probably a good idea and that you can still have access to that same left turn and, and R-cut. But what, what we're missing here, and it seems like the gentleman had some business argument, and did I lose my clicker?
She's got it.
Okay, can, can we get zoomed out, please, just to show the plan in its entirety? So, that's perfect, that's perfect. So what, we also want to make sure that we are providing sufficient access for, is for our future outlots as well. And so if you look directly south to that drive lane that is receiving that right-in off of McClellan Circle, that, that's, that's a whole future outlot for at least one, maybe two significant users. And so we will need that access drive on the bottom of that to, to serve those uses. The use of the, the access point for those future out parcels would not come off of that, that entry drive, as you don't want to choke down the, the vehicular circulation coming in off of McClellan Circle. This property abuts a public road. Ferguson and Finn Castle are both city roads and general development practice is when you're abutting a public road, you, you connect to it for, for various reasons. It's, it's good, it's good planning in general. This project, aside from all of that, the, the idea of connectivity between public roads and private development, the, the folks on Ferguson Way will have the opportunity to now traverse this property and get out to the light at the school. And so that's the benefit of, of cross-connectivity, just from a general planning concept. I, I think that, that's just, just good practice, whether this is a grocery store or anything else.
So which adjustment did you say you would make?
Right now, this is the plan we're moving forward with.
You talked about the right turn.
I said, I said the right-out makes sense at face value, but there's reasons that it's not the best idea. Number one is, we're still going to connect over to Ferguson and Finn Castle to provide that connectivity from adjacent, from, from adjacent land uses and provide that cross-connectivity. We need this additional access drive on the backside of that future outlot on the bottom of the page there for access to those as well. And so for those reasons, yeah, a right-out could go in that location, but it's not going to remove the access point we have currently proposed on Finn Castle.
But it would alleviate a lot of traffic going down.
Derek, if I may, I'm Justin Phelps, I haven't signed it either, so...
Do you swear or affirm?
Yes.
Justin, what? Come up here.
Come on, we can roll, say.
This is probably the, the quietest I've been able to sit for a long time. So I just wanted to interject that we, we were very involved with KYTC the entire time. I think the suggestion on, you know, adding the right-out, we're certainly open to doing that. That was actually where we started, you know, and, and then we, after going back and forth, we ended up only having a right-in. So if a right-out can be approved by KYTC, by all means, we're, we'll definitely look at doing that and revisit that again. But I just wanted to interject, we did start down that path and this is kind of where we landed, so. But I think it would definitely help the access, I agree, and it would take less people from, you know, coming down and exiting the neighborhood that way. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. What was your name again? I'm sorry.
Justin Phelps.
Thank you.
Last but not least, I have my apologies. When you look at it, they can still have access to this future outlot based on this entrance and exit and then around here. This does not have to go all the way through to Finn Castle, does not. I'm next to the smartest guy in the room for that. So this, this can come around and they can come back around and go do a little figure eight and come out here or up at your two ingresses and egresses at the top of the property.
Have cross-access with the internal lots.
That's right. Have cross-access to the internal lots. So there is absolutely no reason that they have to have it. Absolutely not.
But then there's no exit good on McClellan Circle to go...
Yeah, you would still have it here.
No, but you can't turn left.
Yeah, they can go right, just like they're going to require us to do if they make this happen.
And do the...
Yeah, it's okay for us to do it, but, well, let's...
Do the bulb up there.
But anyways, they can still turn down and turn around and go back up, just like you planned to have us do. So there's no reason to force this upon us as citizens of our community, and aren't good ones for that matter, to make us be put at risk for a different traffic pattern that we have to go across along with our children that are learning to drive and that all are going to, well, most of them are going to gray crossing, and they're going to have to deal with that also.
Thank you.
Mr. Phelps, it looked like, I, I, at least maybe it's appropriate to let the developer respond to that.
I guess, you know, from, from the retailer's perspective, I mean, I think there's a lot of good points that were being made. But one of the most critical things is for the, the retailers will tell you to be able to get into the site when you're heading northbound on McClellan, and if you take away that access, you don't have that left-in to, to the property. And otherwise, you've got to go up, set at a light, go in, in a grocery, in a retailer, really any retailer, that's, it's not going to work for them.
So we're required to do it, but, I mean, when I go to Kroger, I have to sit through multiple lights to get from McClellan View to Kroger. I'm supposed to sit through all those lanes. I still go because someone pays a candle.
Sure.
So...
Well, this hopefully can be another option. You, you know, I think it's, if you look at it though, really, if you take away no left-in access, that movement as you go west onto Frankfurt Pike is, is really challenging. And it's just going to be difficult for, to get the support of an operations of the, the likes of the quality grocery that we, that we're at at the table.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is David Koons. I live at 117 Ferguson Lane, and yes, I swear. You know, I'm not real technical. This is all kind of beyond me, but my only point is, we have one way in and one way out of our subdivision. There's one way in and there's one way out. So you're telling me that we now have to share that one way in and one way out with a big development? Does Kroger do that with another neighborhood? Are there any other big developments that you have to go through that to get to their neighborhood?
Well, I, I hear what you're saying, David. But that, but that entrance down there is not the only way in. There's also, so everybody's not going to be coming in or exiting by your own subdivision. There's multiple...
When there's one way in and one way out, it sure feels like we have to share that? We have to, to give that up?
Unless it just gives you another way out.
If we had another way out of our subdivision, all right, then I could go another way to get out and avoid that, but I can't.
It, it, according to Jerry, it sounds like you're going to, when Ball develops that next property over there, you're going to have another way in and out.
That's not, that's not bad.
Obviously enough, that's not really bad.
Yeah, if Ball Homes does develop the, that other farmland behind us and open up that Lyota Way, it is true, we could go through and exit that other subdivision, probably out onto Payne's Depot Road. But this right-in and right-out on McClellan Circle, it's no different than what you proved for Scott County High School on 32. You've got that right-in and right-out only. Now, people have complained because they've made left turns there whether you like it or not, but trucks can still go up to the traffic light and go in any of the other two entrances.
And that's what, that's what Brad was saying. If you're a truck driver, you're going to want to go on up there and go in these...
Yeah, they'll put in a left-turn light because there's going to be a left-turn lane or there'll be a right-turn lane to get in it also.
And if I can just interject, I hear the developer saying they're willing to make that concession, but the state will have to agree to it. They've asked once for that from the state, right?
We got to pound the state on their head.
Well, that's fine.
I've been involved trying to pound the state without success, so give a magic key.
Yes, sir.
If you want to be, I'll pound them.
I have a side name, Jerry Adair, Jerry Adair, like the county.
Thank you. Oh, and did you swear?
I swear now.
Very good, thank you.
I live between Jerry and Chris, so I feel like I've gotten the influence from them. And I'm not looking at this from any other perspective but that of good neighbors. We've already stated, you've got 44 houses there, 30 representatives are here tonight to talk about this and our concern about this. Most of the people who have spoken have said we're very happy to have that development there. We will be your good neighbors. What we're asking is for you to be our good neighbors. We would love to use your store. Give us back our e- access and egress without a problem and we will use your store. I mean, why would we drive all the way up to Kroger if we've got something right here? We're not going to want to do that. So when you say it's going to be up to the highway, I, up to the, the state, I understand that. Lean on them.
Heavenly.
There's a difference between the legal thing to do and the right thing to do. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So you all had stated how hard it was to get turned left out of your subdivision now, and if we took that entrance out to go to this magical grocery store, you'd have to turn left and go up to the light and turn left on Frankfurt Pike, is that right?
Yeah. When you come out of our subdivision, there is a left-turn lane coming off McClellan Circle into our subdivision. It is possible, when you leave and cross the one lane to turn left, there's enough room for you to sit there while traffic clears before you make the left turn.
Yeah, you got that, got that.
You don't have to try and dart in ahead of traffic. There's plenty of things. The other thing is, Finn Castle Way is, is basically two lanes. Now, are they going to widen that to? Our neighborhood is only three. We only allow parking on one side so that fire trucks can get down, because if you put parking on both sides, a fire truck can't get down the street. So the street is not wide. And if we're going to dump Ball Homes new stuff in there, we're going to have a heck of a traffic problem. Thank you again.
This is a preliminary development plan to begin with. So all of these entrances and exits are not cast in stone. Is that a fair assumption to make? That they can be changed at the, at the final...
I mean, maybe it has the potential of being changed.
Ben, you're sitting there grinning and...
I think it's up to them. I mean, yes, they're, they have dealt with the state for multiple years now.
Yeah.
Who's a...
The developer.
The developer. So I guess it wasn't, my question was, is there a way to approve the preliminary with the strong request for the additional pushing, pounding, whatever, of the state for that right-out only?
Certainly the commission can do that.
Yeah.
And I think, and it just occurred to me, one of the reasons for, I think, this, this problem, and I do agree it's a problem, I think it's a dreadful layout, but those entry points have been agreed to and approved by the state for 30 years now, or whatever that length of time is. And I would imagine that's why the state kept pushing them back to it, because that's where that entrance or that crossover was agreed to a long time ago. That's the way they planned it now for all these years. And so to make the changes, they've literally got to change what they've approved and what they've been kind of building off of.
Absolutely.
I'm not saying it can't be done, of course it can be done, but, I mean, that was a foundational decision a long time ago, and that's why they've got turn lanes, that's why they've got stacking areas, because that's where it was always intended to be. And now to move it up the road for right-ins and right, and, and cut this off, they've got a major connector that they would have to decide no longer to use. Well, that's not, you know, generally the way they do it. Not that you can't ask for it, not that you can't lean, but that's why they're doing this. That's the way it's been planned for, well, since I had no white hair. I mean, it was done a long time ago.
I don't know about that, Charlie. You've had white hair a long time.
Well, that's, you know...
Not this long.
As, as you go around the, the new part of McClellan Circle, the new bypass... As, as you go around the, the new part of McClellan Circle, the new bypass, on past the, the new high school and all around towards Centeneta Pike, you can see where they've got entrances already laid out for all these, whether it's ever developed or not, but they have got those already in, in their mind there where they're going to go. And so we've got, you know, basically the same thing. But like Charlie said, you know, we can, we can ask, we can go back and, or they can, uh, and go from there. Lisa, you have something?
Yeah, last thing. It's, Chris had a great, I mean, I think Chris gave it a great alternative. But then I felt like he came up and said, well, this is what we're doing. I don't feel like you, you seem real flexible that we may not, we may have another option that we could even look at. I don't feel like that was even really examined, because he came back up and said, this is where.
What did Justin come back up and say? Is that's what we started.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Justin said that's what they wanted to start with, and they're willing to go back and ask for it again.
Let me take a step further, if I may. When, when we actually started, they didn't want to have any right in coming off of McClellan either. They wanted to dump it all down into that main road. So, you know, this is, you know, one thing that we were able to get is at least the right end when you're heading southbound. So by all means, we'll, we'll definitely explore trying to get that right out. I think it would be, would be great to get.
Would it, would it help you if there was a formal request made on behalf of local officials, our state senator, our, the governor seemed to be very interested in developing Georgetown, Scott County, so maybe he should listen to the people, of course, the transportation department to listen to people.
Absolutely. I think anything that can put the pressure on to do it would be, would be great. Want to pass out how many, how many homes are in the neighborhood to advocate that? That might be able to help everyone sign it. By all means, we're, we're open to facilitate it and make it happen.
So what would that look like to get our local officials involved with you and requesting this? How would that work?
Um, that's a good question. I, I think we could help facilitate that and figure out the best way to, whether it's just getting the endorsement from, from the neighbors that share that entrance point. Um, you know, maybe having something from the city that endorses it as well, that, that would probably be good.
Well, this will be the ideal time to do that, because the state of Kentucky is heavily involved in what's happening here in this community. And they need to start listening to the people that lives here.
Sure, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Bernie Jenkins is a member of our church. So.
Talk with Bernie.
A number of us here go to that church. We can lean heavily on Bernie.
There you go.
To help support your, your position.
Well, and honestly, it appears to the people that live in Georgetown, in the larger picture, that the state of Kentucky is having regular meetings with our local mayor, our county judge. And so they should have an avenue to sit down and talk to them about this situation. This cannot be one way, like you said.
Mm-hmm.
And it's time that the people of Georgetown, they were just not going to put up with it.
There you go.
And it's not fair to these people either. None of us in life have that.
I would just ask two things.
Yes, Bob.
To our friends on this great committee. Number one, that we engage our Department of Transportation with the state and see how they can help us and influence for their citizens that they serve in the, in the state or in the county Department of Transportation. Secondly, I beg of you, I absolutely beg of you, don't preliminarily approve this tonight. Those always end up with just approvals. I would ask you and beg of you to table it and come back to this. Preliminary approvals are just approvals waiting to happen. This needs to be tabled for our sake, for these 44 families and our children that are yet to come.
Well, how, how, how much, sir, the developer, how much, like, you, you have a long history of this, which we don't know about. So how hard is it for you to have these type of high-level meetings with the state of Kentucky? They put you off for six months, for a year?
No, they've been, they've been very receptive, and I think, I'll, I'll be happy if we, if we need to table this and revisit and go have these conversations based on how this meeting went and, and see what we can do to be able to, to address some of these, these items that have been brought up in the meeting tonight.
And we still have a very powerful state senator that is still in office here. I would highly suggest you have a conversation with him as well.
All right. Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Uh, especially since they've expressed a willingness for a tabling. Continue the matters to next month, and at the same time, pass a resolution, I'm assuming the support's there, but a resolution requesting DOT to revisit this with the idea of moving it from Finn Castle back up to where it's been proposed tonight. Because except for the fact that they're changing spots that have been approved forever, I can't imagine anybody would disagree that that's a better, a better location. But do it by resolution, not just staff give them a call, or not just leave them alone to make a call.
Yes.
Make a resolution, a formal vote that says you would request them to approve this other arrangement.
Can I, can I interrupt? Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I just want to make it clear that when, when we approached the state, it would be to add a right out where it's showing the right end. Is that how everyone's understanding it?
Yes.
The left end access is still going to be critical for the overall project. I just want to make that clear.
No. That's not what we're asking for?
No, no. What we're proposing is to have the, the right out here and eliminate this connection. Okay, I was under the impression that the left end was still, was still palatable under that, that government. That's, that's, that's for a different conversation. I misunderstood.
They won't move them forward.
Yeah, it's going to be too close to be able to, to be able to get that left end access when it gets up to that light. Or when you get up to where that right end is currently showing.
I never did get your name.
No, I, I didn't sign in either. Steve Delp.
What's your name?
Steve Delp, D-E-L-K.
And you swear?
140, I swear. 147 Ferguson.
Oh, I've, I've lost that address as long ago.
So basically, to what you were saying, you made comments that these have been, cut-throughs have been made. I can show you cut-throughs now of turn lanes that aren't getting used. There's a dead end one that comes into our subdivision of a turn lane there that isn't used anymore. I think at one point, they thought that was going to be to turn into our subdivision or something, but it isn't.
Turn-ins is not what I'm talking, I'm talking about where it's actually a cut-through the median.
It's a cut-through.
And they were every 12, 1200 streets.
It's also a cut-through. So it's just your comment about these have been made for 30 years and that's where they should be.
Well, the, the developer chose not to use it.
I guess.
Yeah. But that's not to say that you have to use it. That's what the state has said.
But if they would make, change this cut-through there, then why wouldn't they make a difference in another cut-through? That they were all set in stone for 30 years and that that's when they're at.
The cut-throughs have been set in stone. Entryways are not always. I'm sure a number of those have moved up and down.
So that was just my challenge to you. Back to what you said about proving it, why don't we go the other way, which is what you were leading to? Why don't we disapprove it, listen to us, disapprove it as a planning commission, to say, hey, Department of Transportation of Kentucky, you need to look at this because the local people don't agree with this.
And the disapproval.
Isn't that what you're representing us, right, as the local? So why don't you disapprove the preliminary and say, hey, under this, to have this further reviewed?
That's, that's what.
Something like that.
Charlie was saying, we didn't have to disapprove it. We can just table delay.
Yeah, that's different than disapproving.
Yeah.
Well, because your comment was, can we pr- approve it?
I asked a question about process to clarify, sir.
Okay, well, I'm giving you one back.
That's fine.
A process.
That is fine. I asked a question about 30 minutes ago about process before we even had the table discussed.
I want to thank all of you for listening to all of us from this subdivision. It's, it's important to us, or we wouldn't have come here. If you would like signatures from everybody in our neighborhood.
You need to do that, Jerry.
On a piece of paper to attach to your recommended resolution. Lisa can get it organized through our neighborhood, pass it around, and we'll get the signatures for you. So it's, it's up to you. I kind of agree with Steve at not approving the thing, tabling it, yeah, that can be done.
Well, you need to engage, that, I mean, don't underestimate a leader or state senator that lives in this community and the governor and the mayor and the judge. All of them need to be involved in this. It should not be just the Department of Transportation, to this gentleman's point, this developer. They have worked many things trying to get there, and they won't budge. Well, maybe that needs to, maybe this is a time it can be changed. We can try, you know?
So I think everybody's open to, from what I feel, tabling it and passing a resolution. But we come back to what does a resolution need to say? Because what I hear is the developer saying one thing and the.
I think our resolution just needs to say, we request that the Department of Transportation relook at this and talk with the developer about alternatives. Yeah.
Okay.
But what happens when all this happens and the state does not change anything? Then, then what? Does the state know that we have, you know, we don't want publics in here?
How, how about, if I might suggest, rather than just ask them to relook, that's kind of nebulous and, and that may not spur action. How about a resolution that simply says, we want to take this off of Finn Castle and put it up there?
Absolutely.
They still may say no, but at least we're giving them a specific. We can give them a reason why that's specific. I don't know what, what the developer would like to do with that. But, but that, and I've not been in that subdivision but a couple of times. But that street was not designed for anything, except a few people who lived there. And, and while they may plan to rebuild the whole thing, and that's very possible, I don't know. I just can't imagine. That is such a delicate little entry to put this kind of traffic for a, a major development like that. I, I think we should be specific. It may not play out, but we should be specific. We should tell them why. And then whoever else can contact them with influence, well, they need to do that too.
So what needs to go first, the motion to table or the resolution?
Well, yeah, I would say a motion to table. In fact, I would include in the motion to table for the purpose of contacting DOT to have this reviewed.
And then, but then have another.
And then have another motion for the actual resolution.
Okay, I'll make a motion to have this table with the.
Well, I second.
Intent of contacting, passing a resolution to contact DOT to have the, to have this moved.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Scott County, Georgetown is not static. The bypass is not static. When you go across 460, in the future, that, there will be something there. Right now, it's pretty farmland, but things never stay the same. So the traffic all the way around the bypass, some of it will be coming past our subdivision. So right now, we're thinking that little corner and the school and what's there now. But the decisions we make on what they do or state, they need to think long-term. How will this affect, be affected if there's businesses all the way around the bypass, like New Circle Road?
And that's precisely why these entrances were named 30 years ago. So you don't have them all piled up like New Circle Northeast. We, we don't want that, and that's why they've done this.
But this business may not have to have.
Well, that's why we're going to make the request. All right, we have a motion by Ms. Singer and a second by Mr. Jesse to continue Marketplace at Frankfurt Pike development.
With the purpose of.
With the resolution.
With, with the purpose of submitting a resolution. And that be continued to a date specific, preferably next month, and that way put a little extra oomph behind it. What is next month's meeting? November 14th. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
I missed your point.
To, to continue to next month?
Did you miss the last two hours, Jerry?
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
You know I love you.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the Chair of Ochis. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Really did. Thank you.
But we also want to say, the developers have actually worked very hard.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, yes.
Could you, and, and, and I hate to.
Please, please, please. We've still got another big development in front of us.
Yeah, I hate to interfere with any, any inertia that's going on here, or momentum. But if I might, could you possibly start that and we work on the language of this resolution and then come back to your resolution in a little bit?
Yeah.
After I filled up a page or two and kind of we, you know.
That, that sounds great to me.
And, and even discussing it with the developer too, perhaps to make sure we're not cross purposes.
Right.
All right.
So we, next on the agenda is ZMA 2024-35 Georgetown Commons. Uh, this is a public hearing, and I am opening that public hearing. This is a zoning map amendment for 99.6 acres. Uh, I-1 light industrial and I-1 environmental sensitive. Yeah.
Thank you.
What is the number I need to turn on?
Huh?
What's the number?
Uh, under Old Business Second One, ZMA 2024-35.
Charlie?
You got it right up there.
Mr. Phelps, can you come here with me just a minute?
Mr. Chair, we're going to push the development plan part of that.
Right, all we're going to do is do the, just the zone change.
Yes, sir.
All right, great.
Looks like Jack does the same thing. I think you got the wrong number on there.
So we only have the zone change now?
That's the, that's on the backside. Uh, the, the zone change is ZMA. You're looking at PDP.
Or PSP.
It's at the very first of the packet. There you go.
So it'll be the first item because it's over, under Old Business.
Thank you.
Everybody good? Oh, so see where we are? It's the very first item of the package.
Yeah. All right, a zone change for ZMA 2024-35 Georgetown Commons.
Thank you. Um, this is a zone change request from a light industrial and environmentally light industrial zoning to B5, which is our general commercial park, C1, which is our conservation district, and R3, which is our highest density residential option, located on the Brim Gardner Farm. It is located off of McClellan Circle. I'll have an illustration there. Um, it is joined by several, a variety of zones, really, um, ranging from high-density residential to rural residential A5. Um, this is, this is our property here. Um, when we are looking at zone mapping amendments, we defer to CARES 100.213, which lists our standards for findings associated with a requested zone change. First of which is that, or part one of which is that before any amendment, they must find that the map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan or an absence, absence that one or more of the following apply, that the existing zone is inappropriate and the proposed one is a more appropriate alternative, or that there are changes otherwise not considered at the comprehensive plan process. This is our future land use map for the area in question. This is actually defined as one of our neighborhood centers. It is the Brim Gardner Amerson Neighborhood Center, where it has this mixed-use function in this intended area as a mixed-use area. Um, the dark green area to the south is the green belt, and so is the dark purple line is the urban service boundary for the south side of Georgetown. To the north, you can see the Mount Vernon residential area with a small pocket of commercial at the intersection of Quality Drive and McClellan Circle, across from that being the industrial area, and so on and so forth. Um, it is, the definition, or at least as described in the comprehensive plan, talks about the future land use, mixed use, and I've highlighted some important items. future land use mixed use, and I've highlighted some important items, which include an emphasis on a mixture of residential and commercial uses that are mutually supportive at a pedestrian scale, and those commercial uses including retail stores and amenities and services, which meet the daily needs of the neighborhoods at which they are in proximity to or that they are around. Secondarily, the category allows for high density residential uses that are, is a focus on walkability and bikeability, focusing more so on the development of townhomes and apartment complexes as it is a high density user. Again, we are proposing or intending to have those areas be highly well planned and highly planned and well planned, that are sensitive to the context of the area by providing biking and pedestrian options, proximity to areas where they can satisfy their daily interests and needs, and proximity to existing and other proposed and planned community facilities. It is essential to understand that at this time, our zoning ordinance does not have an established mixed use district. It has been an item of discussion, but at this point, we are not operating within this theoretical third category or overlay district or anything of the sorts. So in this instance, it is reasonable to anticipate that applicants come before us wanting to redevelop or develop these mixed use areas or those future land use areas defined as mixed use through a combination of zones that adjoin one another. So in this instance, they have chosen the B5, which is a highly controlled design, very focused, commercial user focusing on interconnectivity in this campus kind of feel. Other B5 areas include the Kroger site and the Walmart site, and as well as they've included the R3 standard, which is the higher density residential component. So with the commercial up in the front, residential in the rear, and then assisted living to the further rear. Both of these uses kind of allow for a variety of commercial and residential activities that staff concludes satisfies that mixed use intent under the current ordinances we operate within. We have a lot of design control, not only in the B5, but in potential development of this property, as we were going to discuss the potential of some larger retail operators in this area, which have additional expectations and standards related to connectivity, appearance, and functionality for non-motoring public. Furthermore, and just one little addendum, is that there is a pocket of the property, which is CARSE topography, which we, and this, per the comprehensive plan, require that they be rezoning that to C1 Conservation. It removes you from calculations related to density and developability of a property and protects that area from any further impacts or as much impacts as we can physically put on something like this. That specific area is located kind of along the railway bed identified in the blue here. As you can see with this one, the B5 is towards the front with two, like, units, we'll call them, of multiple large scale retailers in the central area with parking in between that, and then along the road front and several outlots that are being proposed at this time. As you move backwards, you start to go from that commercial activity to a residential component with a defined, we call it gym or family wellness center located in the B5 zone, followed soon after by an R3 rezoning for the apartments complex, and then behind that, closest to the green belt, an assisted living facility. So this is kind of where they're operating right now. Again, this is, we, as Rhett has said previously, we not only zone for now, we zone for the future. If this were to change hands, we want to make sure that this would kind of be well-suited for this area. So when we're looking at this, we require a traffic study. So this is just a grab from the present, or from the staff report, just talking about their different traffic studies. Diane Zimmerman, who did the previous traffic study, also performed this traffic study, looking at the proposed activity for each type of use, taking the sum of that and saying, this is what the average expected use would be during any AM window, which is seven to nine, or PM window, which is four to six typically. In the mornings, we would reasonably anticipate that about 568 total trips would be generated on this property across all the five, well, four categories of users, and then in the afternoon evening, we would expect about 1,400 trips generated for this user. With the volume of trips expected in the existing conditions, there are several proposals that the traffic study recommends be undertaken to kind of address these impacts or potential impacts on the traffic systems that already are in this area. We're trying to reduce the impact of things and make improvements so that level of service, which is our standard for determining how usable things are, how quickly can you get to and from an area, does not become worse than a level C. So we're hoping for above-average performance. Letters D, E, and F often mean that there's a lot of wait time for trips and a lot of kind of just gridlock that we're trying to avoid as much as possible in our existing and proposed transportation systems. In the traffic study, they looked at three locations, the intersection of Quality Drive and McClellan Circle, the intersection of Windsor Path and McClellan Circle, and then the intersection of Christian Drive and South Gate Drive. Christian Drive and South Gate Drive is just a non-signaled intersection that it is important to evaluate what's the traffic flow to and from that neighborhood to the south. Those are, that will be kind of our main kind of area that we're really focusing on, making sure we don't create circumstances that would negatively impact their operations or anything like that, as well as everyone else's operations. Next slide. So there are across, at least in the commercial area, there are three points of contact that are being proposed for improvement. I will start with the leftmost of one, which is the green one. There is an existing light at Quality Drive and McClellan Circle, and the applicant proposes opening up that third or that fourth option to that signalized intersection to allow that control access point for those commercial users. They show sufficient queuing space for those users coming in and out of the commercial area, whether residential or commercial, and have some dedicated turning lanes and improvements to the road to allow for some safe movement around and, and everything like that. Further, it would be south and west. It takes me a second. This, this is a rather strange shape for it. They do propose a non-signaled intersection with McClellan Circle approximately 1,000 feet south of this location with a, an option for a right out, left in, and right in option. So no left out option at this location to allow for people to maneuver through the properties. If you were interested in making a left turn, you would either be having to continue along South Gate Drive through that connection that is identified in orange, or going towards the proposed expanded signaled intersection at Quality Drive and McClellan Circle. I did my little spoiler alert and it kind of ruined the surprise. They do also propose a connection to South Gate Drive, an existing public road that is kind of the, the bulb there is kind of the line between residential activity to the south and east and what, uh, commercial activity to the west. So they would tag into that one to allow for users who were opting not to take McClellan Circle to kind of come in the property, enter on this one, and kind of get some private road access to the proposed development itself. Does this one have it here? Oh, nope. I will go back, go back, keep going. One final option is the existing road stub is at, there's an existing road stub at Tavner Drive, which serves, it's kind of like the dividing line between Aberdeen Way and, and Stone Crest, which is located up here in this intersection here. So they propose, a proposal has been made to make a connection to this existing road stub that would allow for those residents in this area an option to go through this proposed new development and come out on the Clones Circle, giving them an alternative option as opposed to having to go through that Lexington Road intersection area or the Stone Gate areas and anything like that, which is already a very crowded point of town. So this proportion here would be, is, well, is proposed to be a public road access with all other kind of internal loops throughout the property being privately maintained options for people. Again, this is all kind of their concept plan stuff, but it's essential to illustrate how that kind of relates to this proposal that they're coming in with. Some additional things that we would be considering at this point in review of the concept plan is there are landscape buffering requirements between commercial and residential, anybody in railways, property perimeter non-accessing, accessing, there's a lot of options for that. And we would be seeing as individual development plans come in, plans for those landscaping to either, to be satisfied at this, at that point in time. Specifically, and I would imagine that we would hear a lot of concern about, this point here between the commercial activity to the, this would be north, to the north area here on this property and this existing residential subdivision, there is landscaping requirements between commercial areas and residential areas of a belief six foot in height, as well as tree installations that would provide at minimum a 70% opacity, which should eliminate a lot of cross-contamination and impacts and everything like that. It won't outright stop those endpoints, but it would be, and we have found that it is an effective screening mechanism to limit the impacts that a commercial act, um, commercial site would have on adjoining residences and residential subdivisions. Again, also along that red line that I do show there, there is additional landscaping that would be required, as that is the residential-commercial boundary at that location. Harped a lot about the concept plan. One last little thing is this is an area that at this time, they are proposing what we would qualify as big box development. So there are standards pertaining to that that I'd mentioned previously with the Marketplace at Frankfurt Plan related to aesthetic character and relationship with existing and proposed parts of the community. Just making sure that this is an engaging environment that we would expect them to adhere to if this was proposed and this concept plan was executed. Besides all that and everything, again, staff does recommend approval of this because, as the findings per KRS 100.213 are concluded to be satisfied in, in that they are in compliance with the adopted comprehensive plan, wherein this area is identified as a mixed use area. And the mixing of zones that is being proposed is concluded to satisfy that expectation. If the board recommends approval of this, and we take this to city council, staff recommends four conditions of approval. The first is that they return with, with any and all development plans. The second is that they get all of their zoning ordinance and subdivision and they be in compliance with that. The third is that they would be responsible for all offsite road and public water and sewer improvements required to, to serve the proposed development. And the fourth is that this approval does constitute approval of the concept plan as proposed for the property, and development plans would need to be submitted that would be in line with what we've seen here tonight, because we are kind of approving it on this proposal of these public road connections, private road connections, improvements to roadways. So this, this approval would constitute approval of the concept plan, and any development plans further on would be expected to meet, to follow the kind of line that's being drawn today in this concept plan going forward.
That question about the concept plan, so if you can talk about a assistant living and, please, about the clubhouse gym or...
Yes, a gym-like, uh, family wellness.
So this is just a, it doesn't actually mean that we'll do this, this is just something that...
Correct.
...make down the road.
Yes, we require concept plans to better illustrate things so that you're not just imagining in the void what this large swath of property could be. They can either be written or they can be a graphic like this one is today.
But they're not locked into any of this, right?
In adopting of the concept plan, we would anticipate that they would follow pretty, generally, the, the proposals here of the outlots, the big box, some type of center area in the track four, which is that wellness center area, and then the apartments and assisted living portions as well.
Okay, thank you.
Will those plans be online somewhere that we can look at?
Uh, yes, all of our stuff is published online. You would look into the staff packet. That would be, that would be available, and you would just have to scroll until you found the, the version of the plans that I'm, I'm demonstrating here, as well as you can visit these, these recordings online on our YouTube page. You can pause it wherever, you can see the visual of the property itself, and you can kind of get a hang of it from that as well, if you want to use a computer for that.
That question?
Yes.
Then, when we did the comprehensive plan...
Yes.
...we heard so many times about how much industrial acreage we needed.
Yes.
And we were taking this out of industrial acreage?
Correct.
And put it into something else?
Yes, we are reducing...
Just want to make that point.
Yep, we are reducing the intensity of the property. This is over the Royal Spring Aquifer, which is, serves our water, and the intensity of uses that could be potentially in an industrial zone on top of our water source may be viewed as inappropriate. And so in the comp plan discussion, it was kind of concluded that maybe it's a little bit much to have industrial here. Maybe there's a more appropriate alternative with this kind of area that's surrounded by residential and commercial activities to kind of keep that going to the railway bed, and in doing that, have that kind of design control and everything like that, that is afforded to us with our regulations related to residential and commercial as opposed to the control that we have in the light industrial zones.
So the changes may be very common.
Yes, we are very aware of the circumstances of it, its location, and the uses around it dictated additional consideration of potential alternatives to the industrial zone that was being proposed.
And the area around it hadn't developed prior, when the last comprehensive plan was done, right?
Um, I believe...
Amerson and all of that?
Yeah, Amerson is new on the other side of the interstate, the underside of the railway bed. Stone Crest has been around for several years. South Gate been around for a while. Mount Vernon and the, and those types of areas have been an established area and kind of, not Amerson, no.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I promised to tell Drew how it...
Can you come up here to the...
Your name, please?
I'm Kelly Ann Bush.
Kelly Ann Bush?
Uh-huh. I'm at 109 Dunlap Drive. How much green space is there on that strip of Dunlap? Do you all have a, like, man, I'm just getting a few 10 feet, or is there...
I believe, maybe actually, is that... Uh, the buffer is at least 15 foot wide with, or not, that's first, yeah, it's 15 foot wide buffer with trees planted every 40 feet plus a 6 foot tall continuous buffer of either hedge fence wall or mound.
Because it looks very thin on some, on some of your maps, that it's not as quite as large on some of the map that I've seen.
Yeah, it is a very large parcel. We had this discussed several times over how we were going to try to fit this on an appropriate scale that could be legible, and unfortunately, with having to show everything on the concept plan, it must, that 15 feet doesn't look like very much when we're at this scale, but when you're actually more zoomed in on the property, it reflects a little bit better.
Okay. Second, second question. I know that there's all different types of things that are going to be on that property. And this is just a suggestion that you're suggesting that these things happen. What is the likelihood of it just all being industrial?
Uh, this would pull this out of the industrial zone.
Okay.
It would go to a commercial operator similar to the site around Walmart. So you wouldn't be seeing heavy manufacturing or...
Still, I'm going to see commercial outside my back door if it, if you don't come up with that little...
I mean, it's, it's a requirement thing. We're going to stand pretty strong on having that buffer be present, because we understand that there are conflicts potentially between commercial activity and their operating hours and sleeping hours. We want to make sure that there's something there so that we can try to limit as much, many times that you're going to butt heads with the commercial operator.
How, how much green space is in between all those three little zones or four, is there any?
Um, I would defer that one to the applicant because they can, or that are particularly that boundary.
And then how many townhomes or, there's not going to be any single living? It's all going to be multi?
Yes, at this point, they are proposing it being the R3 zone. The R3 dome does allow for single-family residential style. For example, the colony is an R3 zone neighborhood, and there are, a large swath of the area is single-family large homes. There are some apartments, there are some townhomes and attached duplexes, but more, there are a good number of single-family residences. I would say in our, my professional experience, if an R3 zone is approved, it more often than not takes a multifamily player, because just you're choosing the zone that would be more favorable to that, and it, going through all the legwork of getting the R3 and then putting single-family houses, doesn't often seem to be the most appropriate investment, at least in what I've been seeing.
Just seems like there's a lot of them popping up all over the place.
Mr. Woodall could present the applicant, he can argue his billing right tonight.
John, I'm forgetting this show.
Don't I know it?
Oh, boy. Okay. She cut mine.
Thank you all. Who's got the clicker? She probably has it. Okay, well, I'll go ahead. Thank you all, John Woodall, tonight on behalf of the applicant Hogan Real Estate. I appreciate your all's attentiveness and how long you've been here, and I'm going to try to do my part. And I'm going to try to do my part to move our side along. We had a meeting just, we're with you on Monday night and had a good meeting. But, you know, and we know we were coming in here tonight with a development plan too, but your new director pulled the law out on us today, so... So we decided we'd better punt, and no, we just, we need to have time to respond to that. And just thought it was best to come back next month on it. But you already met the applicant tonight. It was Hogan Real Estate again. I mean, you met Justin, and that's, over there is Mike Leonard, Mike's Director of Development. And then you already met Derek. Derek's with Land Design and Development. And then who you haven't met is Landon Bertram. He's with Denton Floyd Company, and they are the builders of the multifamily.
Beavers, I'm sorry, Beavers and what?
Of the multifamily residential section. We're going to have Denton do a more elaborate presentation on that this evening, but it all really is akin to the development plan issues. And where we are on that, it's, I don't believe there's really any objection to the details of our development plan. It's the variances that are very important that we've got to flesh out. So it's taken a month to do, that's just fine. But in any event, some of you all have alluded, especially you, Commissioner Jesse, Hogan's made a commitment to this community. I mean, this isn't the only project they've got going, you know, the one on Frankfurt. And this project, I know they started digging in on it back pre-COVID. So it's been going on a long time because it takes a long time. And that's not only dealing with local officials, but, you know, municipal water. We've got to figure out how to sewer this property, how to water the property. Got to have a partnership on that. So things like that have been ongoing. And, you know, that's why we thought it was okay to push this thing one more month because it's been a complete, these guys have been an open book from day one and tried to be a good partner to put the best development out there. And to the point about that, and Elise did a great job as always, you know, on the staff presentation of what we're doing here. But the, this property is light industrial right now. If somebody wanted to, they could go out there and throw up warehouses and turn it into industrial property, which I don't think would benefit this community one bit. In fact, having sat through a few comp plan processes, you know, either as a participant or a spectator, it is long and it is tedious. And, you know, I think the people that go through that, you know, they kind of hope that what they've prospected or determined for the future of the community will be followed. And here, while there's not a designated zone that's mixed use, I think there one day will be, that's what this property was designated for. And I think not only the, we argued some in the 17 plan, but definitely explicitly in the 2024 plan. There's no question about that. So the decision was made to flip this over from industrial to mixed use. And the way we've sought to do that is what you'll wind up with in the B5, you know, this is a 99 acre, 99.6 acre parcel. And we envision 68 acres of that being B5. 3.8 acres of that will be the C1 where we've got to deal with the environmentally sensitive areas. And then the R3, the residential, that's about 27.8 acres. A lot of my slides and so forth dealt with the development plan, but I think what I'll try to do is move through this just to give you an indication of what we're doing. At the end of the day, the total investment in the community and vis a vis this development will be roughly $244 million. If you look at the number of buildings, you see where that comes from. Because will be, if this is approved as envisioned, the question was asked, Commissioner, whether are they going to build this? Well, there's a lot of ciphering that goes into putting these things together. And these gentlemen and ladies in their company, they are professionals at the top of this tier and have tried to put together, and I think they have, another top-tier development. They have a history for almost 40 years of delivering these things. But here, we're talking about two large-scale retailer lots. There'll be roughly 11 commercial outlots, then the multifamily, possibly the assisted living and the gym facility. So, okay, I've been watching people do this all night. Ah ha, all right, that's my table of contents. Don't need that. No, that's my pointer. There we go. Nothing's there. What's the C?
I have no idea. But it's in there, so in theory, you should be progressing.
Oh, ready. Rhett's trying to sabotage my presentation. Okay, here we go. All right, so that's just, ignore that part about variances. But that's our statistics that tells you...
A good-looking group of people.
Now, this is why I always carry hard copies. Just didn't hand them out pending the next month's hearing. But I'll tell you what I'll do. Forget about it, Rhett, I never trust technology. That's why I always bring my own. Let's do this. Sorry, gentlemen.
Smart man.
Thank you.
You feel that?
I've just got a couple of books.
Okay, so we just go through, you can go to, say, tab three. That right there gives you the overall layout of the development. That's the first picture of it. It's a little, blew that up a little larger. If you're like me, I have trouble seeing some of this stuff. And if you move on to tab four, these are our little more bougie exhibits that kind of give the idea of what this project will look like at nightfall from an elevated level and from McClellan Circle. All right. I remember at the meeting, I told you I was going to come up with a little better exhibit. We would come up with a little better exhibit for you all on the signage. So we'll just, forget about, it's number six. Forget about the fact that those circles are on there. That tells you where our signs are going to be. We'll talk about that next meeting. But this gives you an idea of what the actual development will look like and how we're situated, how the multifamily is situated, and with respect to not only McClellan Circle, but the other, the retail outlots. And under tab seven, this is probably our best exhibit for showing you really what the world looks like in this area from different vantage points once we have the development imposed in this location. There were some questions about tree cover and so forth. I think the exhibits under seven, and I'm happy to give you a copy of this, ma'am. Okay. That show you what the buffering requirements are. And whatever they are with respect to, you know, between the multifamily and between various parcels, Landon?
Yes.
Would you join me up here really quickly? And just explain to the commission what we're, what's your, what does your firm do? What's your expertise? And what do you envision here at the site?
Sure, yeah. Denton Floyd is a multifamily housing developer. We focus on Class A multifamily housing as well as affordable housing. I actually joined them a year ago after working for an affordable housing developer for over a decade. My background's actually in city planning. Yeah, we build top-of-the-line, top-of-the-market, Class A multifamily. We're very proud of our clubhouse. I can share renderings of the clubhouse. It's a community center, the center of all of our multifamily developments. So there's a lot of intention, a lot of thought, a lot of consideration for the residents that goes into building our design of our multifamily developments.
Excellent.
Yep.
I have a question. How many of these type of developments do you say you've done like this one?
Oh, all over the southeast. I don't have the numbers in front of me. I've actually printed out here.
Go ahead. And how many, how many years? How many years have you been doing this?
I've been doing this personally for multifamily development for 12 years. Our company's been doing it for 30 years.
Why don't we go ahead and upload some of your renderings there?
Sure.
You've got your... While we're doing that, Derek, if you wouldn't mind jumping over here just for a second, just for the benefit of the commission. And I'm sorry, I did not ever introduce the Brimgardner Brothers. These are the owners of the property. Just as far as what you were envisioning in, you know, in terms of Hogan's charge to you when this particular development was laid out?
Sure, so as John established with the zone change request, this is a mixed-use development. And so what we're looking at are some big-box users further back off of the main drag without parcels along the front, as you would typically see, sort of similar to the last project we talked about. We are planning for a major public road to be dedicated throughout the development to serve these various uses, really create a, oh, there's an array of various big-box users that will be in place on either side of this proposed road towards the back of the site as we sort of step down in intensity from McClellan. We, that's where we've located our residential zones as a sort of a standard step down in intensity from a zoning and a land use standpoint. Establishing adequate buffers along the single-family properties adjacent to us is a huge element of this, where we intend to fully comply with all the landscaping and setbacks along that side as our concept plans currently reflect. And so certainly, the goal of this is a Class A, you know, very nice and inviting master project with lots of different experiences for users on the site.
Excellent. I'm going to put you on the spot for a second, Mike. We brag, come on up here. We brag a lot on you guys on the engagement locally, what that's looked like, how that's taken shape over the last couple, last few years. Just give the commission the benefit of how that unfolded and really what you, you know, the obstacles you'd had to overcome to put this on the ground.
Mike Leonard, Hogan Real Estate. We, I say we, Justin, I think, opened the door sometime in... You weren't using a baby? I think it was 2020, 21 with the Brimgardeners about the property. And obviously, we didn't, we planned on coming in front of the planning commission before today, but as we referred to it, you know, we ran into PC, so pre-COVID. And so, you know, COVID kind of wiped us out for almost 18 months. Is that fair, Justin, in the process? And obviously, we don't have any sewers to the property. So those discussions began with Chase Azavito at the Water and Sewer Board shortly thereafter. And so then we, good news was there was a new plant coming. The bad news is the new plant got slowed down. And then we needed to get a sewer line from the Brimgarden property to the new sewer plant. And so we kind of got slowed down by that process because without sewers, we can't develop what we're trying to develop. But in the process, what we did over a period of four years is build a great relationship with both Chase and his team and obviously with... Joe Kane. Yeah, predecessor.
I feel like God all day.
And so the good news is, and, you know, we've been able to open our books really because what you see has been an evolution of, I think, everything that the planning commission team and the staff in the Sewer Board has. And the good news is on Monday, City Council will hopefully endorse our public-private partnership to build a sewer line from the Brimgarden property to pick up one of the new sewer lines. And it'll be a little bit after the new plant goes online. So we spent a lot of time learning about you all. Maybe it wasn't intended to be four years before we got here, but it just worked out that way. So that's the excellent.
Well, so to Mike's point, I mentioned this Monday night. The process here's worked, I think, the way it's supposed to. You know, a lot, it's always interesting to me, some developers, they think they just submit what they submit, and that's it. Well, it doesn't work that way. It doesn't work that way here, and it doesn't work that way anywhere that cares about planning. Holden would probably say that. It's give and take, and that's what this is. And as far as the zone change side of this, I think we've reached that level where the bars cross. And hopefully, on the development plan, we'll reach that next week or next month. But this has been a project that I'm excited and honored to be a part of. It's always humbling to be a part of something that's really going to make a difference, especially in this community. And I thank you all for what you do. And if you have any questions for me or us, please let me know. Otherwise, we appreciate the staff's recommendation of approval and accept that and are willing to accept the conditions that go with it.
I think, you know, Monday, we went over lots of things.
Sir.
Anybody have any questions for John?
Very cool.
Anybody in the audience?
Did you, ma'am, did you get a copy? You want a copy of this?
All right, if there is no further discussion and I hear none, I'll close the public meeting, a public hearing, I'm sorry, Mr. Perkins. And I will take a, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass whatever that number is, dash 204.
Dash 35. I have a motion and a second to approve the zone change. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the vote, the chair votes yes. All right, thank you, thank you. And the other item, PSP 2024-47 is consent-eligible. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. No variances, no specific public feedback on it. So it is up for consent if no one wants to hear about it.
Does anybody want to hear from Elise?
No, that one's in.
Is that a fair question?
Can you give us just a second? My paperwork's out already.
I believe it is item H or I.
Yeah.
It'll be the last, well... It's not the last of the packet. It's before the pile of development plan stuff. So it's really just in the packet.
Bringing those, the...
All into the right zone.
Yeah, yeah. All right, with no further discussion, I will take a, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We've got about five different documents. Which one is it?
Forty-seven.
This is A, yeah, forty-seven. All right, Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green, I thought maybe you'd fallen asleep over there. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Ms. Singer?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Charlie, you got all that in here or no?
I've got some handles, though.
Anywhere near Billy Ray tonight, too?
And forty-seven is one that's being put off for next month?
No, forty-seven was just approved.
Oh, forty-seven, that's what we just did.
Yes.
That's it, so, okay, all the others are put off for next month.
Right. Forty-eight.
See, I told you it's confused.
Alright, gentlemen and ladies, let me give you the first paragraph of it, that's the easy part. We're going to sit in a resolution that requests DOT approve a marketplace ranker pipe right out to McClellan Circle adjacent to the proposed left-in as currently shown.
No, it's right in. Right in.
Oh, I'm sorry, right in, yes. The right out adjacent to the right in, yes. Alright, easy one. Now, we went back, we're looking over this thing. And I hate to keep bringing up a sore subject, but all of those cut-throughs that were approved 30 years ago at 1,200-foot centers, we looked at the measurement to get us from the intersection back to where we're hoping to get a cut-through, not just simply a right-in and right-out. It's only 400-something feet. There's not a chance of you know what if they're going to approve that. So rather than, and this is just a suggestion, but rather than request that they approve that, when I think there's simply no way, there's also the added, not incentive, but counterfeiting issue. Without a left end off of northbound McClellan Circle, developers certain, they're not going to be interested in this, they're not today. The big boxes, whoever, they're not going to be interested because that whole limit of town has to have access and then be cut off. So here's my suggestion. Planning Commission also is concerned about traffic accessing Marketplace Ranker Pike through Penn Castle Way, comma, which will create conflict with an existing small residential entrance. The Commission unanimously prefers, I'm trying to make this damn thing as strong as I can make it, unanimously prefers removal of Marketplace Ranker Pike traffic from Penn Castle, period, if that is not possible, and I frankly don't think it is possible because it's too close. Well, that's where you get the 12 feet, by the way, as opposed to the other location. Oh, and just, I will cite them, not only is it too close, but the stacking lanes or the intersection would interfere at the place where we're talking about asking for a cut-through. They're not going to interfere with stacking lanes. Those stacking lanes aren't always sufficient now. They're not going to do that. But anyway, if that is not possible, comma, the Commission requests the impact on the residential access or entrance, I'm not sure what that word is, I'll find out, be reduced to the extent possible. Now, one thing that both Ben and the developer pointed out, this is not going to be an obvious access point, I'm talking about Penn Castle Way, because development's way up there, and here's this full entrance down here, who knows they'll be making improvements to it. On the other hand, all the town over here is not really going to want to go up to the intersection to go around the corner, which of course is why any customers they've got aren't going to be too interested either. So that's my suggestion. Again, paragraph one, request DOT approve Marketplace Ranker Pike a right out to McClellan Circle adjacent to the right-in as currently shown on the plan.
Alright.
Paragraph one, I think that's the easy one. Number two, Planning Commission also is concerned about traffic accessing Marketplace Ranker Pike through Penn Castle Way, comma, which will create conflict with an existing small residential entrance, period. The Commission unanimously prefers removal of Marketplace Ranker Pike traffic from Penn Castle, period, if that is not possible. The Commission requests impact on the residential entrance to be reduced to the extent possible.
What about entrance on Frankfurt?
Well, that's the name of the, that's the name of the development.
Oh, not Frankfurt Road?
No.
Not, oh, okay.
Marketplace Ranker Pike, that's the name of the development.
Should you add something about the substandard width of this existing road to be used for that purpose?
I understand the plans show, and I didn't take time to measure it, we didn't have time to talk a whole lot more, but all of that's going to be enhanced anyway. So there's going to be that kind of conflict just as they enhance the entrance that's already there, as well as moving the church entrance, you know, down the way. So that will be done. I'm not sure how they're going to improve it as far as making it further to McClellan because that's kind of dead and stuff. So what other options, I have no clue, and I'm not sure there may not be a whole lot of them, but at least we're showing unanimously, we want something done there.
Yeah.
To minimize the impacts. It's just that with stacking lanes interfering in distance, I just can't imagine that's going to be changed.
And on the backside, not for this resolution, I'm assuming you all will reach out to elected officials to see if they can have any influence over...
Well, see, I wonder, well, if they're imposing on a small neighborhood, I mean, if you was driving that entrance and...
Yeah, yeah.
Or not much more than a drive.
No, you're right, it does.
I'd be shocked for a second.
That's why it's kind of hidden, because it's like a tuck-in.
Yeah, which is, yeah, one of the, you know, allure of the place. You know, you go into this little oasis back there, you don't even realize what's back there.
Might help a little bit to drop the speed limit from 55 to 35.
Anyway, that's my suggestion. What say you?
Sounds fine to me. Sounds really good.
In that case, the mo, if that's agreeable, then the motion would be to incorporate this language into a resolution. I'll get it to you tomorrow to sign, Charlie.
Alright, so that motion comes from you?
No, no, not from you guys.
Do we need to add a line about also about contacting and getting the help of our local elected officials?
Alright, how about we add a third paragraph which says, and the Commission requests the developer to contact not only DOT about these issues with these goals in mind, but also what, I'm not sure how to put that.
To partner with local officials.
But, yeah, to partner with influencers, I'll put a better line than that.
Yeah. Facebook. Timing is everything. In this situation, they're hot on the heels of, you know, they're in Scott County a lot right now, so maybe, maybe a miracle happens. So get the, send it to the mayor, the judge, and our state senator.
Oh, yeah, oh, I think we should do that, too. Yeah, we'll talk to them on this. Yes. If that's okay, then a motion to incorporate this language into a resolution, second and so on.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second been made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Let the record show that it was by unanimous vote.
Very good, and just for Janey's sake, motion by Singer, second, I believe.
Harold and Jesse.
Why is it still standing? I got to stand up.
I came to journal shit.
This is the stuff we talked about for the...
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. It only started about 5:00 AM, no big deal. Starts the same time tomorrow. Seems to me to be a be careful what you wish for.
Do you what?
Because if they get what they want...
We still have some business to conduct. The developers are free to leave.
Thank you.
But we have, going into overtime.
Who got pizza?
I know, where's our pizza, Charlie?
It was supposed to be here at 8:30. I don't know what happened to it.
Drive-hub let you down.
It'd have been nicer if I had pizza.
Commissioners, if I may, first off, great first meeting, glad to be here. So what we have in front of you is really for informational purposes at this point. What you have in front of you is essentially what I'm calling a director's interpretation. Coming on staff this last week, it became obvious that one of the, one of the issues that our office is having is how to clarify when an application is complete and ready to move forward for review, when an application is not complete and ready to move forward for review. And so what we've done is I've just taken a moment and I've put on paper essentially where staff would like to draw that threshold. That threshold, as we've determined and as you'll see inside of this, is if it has the supporting documents, if it has the actual application, and if it has its filing fee, we're ready to move forward and we're getting in front of you to TRC as quick as we can. What we don't want to do, though, is we don't ever want to make a habit of accepting incomplete applications, forwarding incomplete information to you, asking for your review, and then ending up in a situation where either staff or yourselves are wasting time looking at things that aren't ready for prime time. With that said, obviously, we understand that not all developments, not all developers are created equal. For some people, it's their first time trying to navigate a system. And so what we've tried to bake into this is this understanding that in rare circumstances, and at staff's discretion, if somebody needs just a little bit more time, either, again, you know, it's don't cash that check till Monday kind of situation, or if, you know, if, again, it comes across our desk and they forgot to slip in that traffic study at the end, you know, we can be patient for something like that. But what we don't want to do is, again, the opposite, which is the check's in the mail and I'll just keep running as if you've got it, okay? And so, again, all this is, is informational at this time. We will be, again, disseminating this to the development community, making sure they're aware of how we're looking at this. But really, the goal of this, as with any future director's determinations, is to help provide clarity, surety, and then efficiency of process moving forward. So with that, I thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Please adjourn.
Thank, I hope your first week has gone well and...
Oh, it's fantastic.
Great.
No, this is wonderful. He's kind of weird.
The process, the process works. Consider yourself adjourned.
Yeah, I hear you. Because getting up is hard to do. Imagine what would have happened if we had RV thing tonight. We'd be ordering breakfast. Can you make it, man? Yeah, I got it.